This meeting of the Manchester Select Board to order, Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, Becky.
Here.
Kathy stands here.
John says yes.
Excellent. We start with public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the room with a public comment on a non-agenda item? Is there anyone online? With a public comment on a non-agenda item? Oh, it's not strictly chairman's report, but I would like to ask the board if we would consider kicking up Lisa Bonneville's request for a longevity bench on Lincoln Street first. I, this seems like a non-controversial issue and it is currently scheduled for 10:30 at night.
For me, me too.
Yeah, really?
I hope not, but, um, Lisa, I think you've made a wonderful packet. I'm sure you have remarks, but you have our support. Feel free to say briefly why.
Okay, well, we had, uh, we had presented six years ago on May 10th, probably before that, launched this, uh, this project, the longevity bench project, uh, with the hope of completing in two years, 30 benches, a little optimistic, to say the least. So we're celebrating our sixth year this year and, um, we have only four benches left to go. Number 26, thank you so much. The Select Board has been wonderfully supportive and we're very proud to have made this donation, all the, over 300 donors to the, um, inventions to this town. So I hope that people get out and enjoy them and appreciate them and, uh, we're going to do more to thank our donors this year. We're going to have a thank you on our anniversary date, um, and then launch a, um, what we're going to call the Bench Walk Challenge. Which is going to be, uh, and will be have new 25 bench brochures and flyers that we'll be handing out here at Town Hall and elsewhere, um, with check-offs for every bench and for every loop. And then we'll have a celebration October 20th, um, down in Mascanumal Park for people to hand in their, um, their flyers. Um, and then we're going to honor them with, uh, anyone who's completed all of it. We'll put them in the longevity bench project all of them. So they'll have five months to complete their visits and we're also going to lead some walks. We're going to leave walks on each loop between May and October. So people become aware of the location of the benches and we'll have leaders, uh, talking about the trees and talking about the history that we pass in town and, and actually checking out the loops.
I have a couple of questions. I think that's a wonderful idea. I was wondering if you were in contact with the Bike and Ped Committee? That they're doing an inventory, they're, one of the things they might be working on is an inventory of the walking paths in town? And it sounds like there would be some mutual interest here.
Sure, no, I, I will be, um, we're working with, uh, with Cheryl at Parks and Rec on this and also the Boosters, um, book, uh, carnival, but with them of October 18, 19, 20. So we'll share the stage over at the.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a connection there for you if you don't mind.
Fabulous, fabulous. I mean, I have, we, I'm on the ADA Committee in town too, so I have been talking with them about other things that have to do with the ADA, uh, trails and things, but, um, yeah, they're on our list to, to work with.
Excellent.
On this, so all that's good.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
Um, I move that the Select Board approve, um, the longevity bench at 48 Lincoln Street with enthusiasm. Second.
Any further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Absolutely.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Thank you. If you want to stay, you, you are certainly welcome.
I have been sitting all day, so. Thank you.
But Morgan, you were supplanted as the first item on our agenda. Tell us what it is that makes you an excellent candidate for the Open Space and Recreation Committee?
First, my passion for the outdoors, including, um, all of Cape Town and just what I see in particular. Those who know me know I have biked around this town since I've been here roughly since 1998. First and often with my son as soon as I could. Six months years, six months old in the trailer, all around town, uh, off into the beach in the summer. And until in the 11th grade, he told me, you know, Dad, you don't have to bike to school with me every day. But it's my passion to be outdoors and to protect open space. In addition to that, I was on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee soon after arriving. Still well-connected there. As you may remember, we were on the school committee together for three years, ending on one 10 years ago. Went on to the finance committee and most recently argued, um, presented a, uh, an article on the warrant in the fall for my passion, representing my passionate, uh, uh, goal to, protect open space and perpetuity.
Are there questions? Um, yeah, Becky?
I messed everybody up by moving, didn't I?
Yes.
A little selfish, don't you think?
Well, I think I've got a little bit of time left, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move all around. Okay, back to, well, first of all, Morgan, thank you very much, uh, for putting your hand up for this. With the, with the, and are you still biking to and from Blackburn?
Right, for 30 years, I've biked to work almost every day, including today. Go through the winter, I've set the tires for the ice.
Excellent, so you know the outdoors well. So my question, I have two. One is, um, have you, well, three questions. Have you spoken with anybody on the Open Space and Rec Committee?
I have not.
Okay, um, do you, have you spent any time kind of looking over what it is they do and what their responsibilities are and are not?
Before throwing my hat in the ring, I went online and looked at the major documents, including the most recent one from 21, which I think is 425 pages, has 65 goals in it, seven of which seem, um, take priority over the next, whatever, 50 something. And I even noticed, uh, ADA came up. The seventh goal is to promoting ADA in open space, which is actually something I spoke about at that meeting.
So i- in terms of, uh, the town and open space and rec, um, what is it you think that we're doing right and, or, or doing well? And where do you feel that, um, we really need to do better? If you have any, I mean, I'm, it's.
That's a great question, no, it's a fair and great question. I think we all cherish open space Manchester has. And, and, um, many of us moved here to enjoy that open space and in many ways, not just to live near it, but for example, to go on walks in the town woods or Patterhouse Hill as well as the larger, uh, tracks of high street, school streets. In general, well, again, at town meeting, we, with health, um, voted to conserve or re-conserve those areas. There's plenty of other opportunities and I've been online for various documents and, I don't remember the names of the documents, but there's tables of open space and whether they're protected and how they're protected. And I noticed some gaps when I come back to town meeting with, uh, filling those gaps, for example. I, I think we do a good job overall. And I also think there is, uh, you know, ever increasing pressure on open space.
Um, and my last question is, um, thank you for answering those two parts. Appreciate that. Do you have the time to put into this?
I will make the time because I have the passion. I, as you noted, I work very sulkily. I've been even known when I'm in a rush to show up directly to meetings biking for my, you know, it's my preferred way of getting around in general. Yes, i- in, compared to the school, my finance committee, this is honestly not as, uh, a burden in many respects, or the Select Board, you guys put a lot more time in. So I don't see it as a burden, I guess.
Okay, and I remember you and I ran against each other for school committee and you won.
Then I lost it, yeah. The next time I lost it, yeah, by a couple votes or something, yeah, it was tight.
Well, thank you again, thank you for stepping up. This is pretty critical, I think.
Does anyone else have?
Uh, I, I'd just say, yeah, than, thank you, Morgan. It looks like your, your interests and your lifestyle, it's open space and recreation. In fact, I think it fits better, I think it fits better than any other ones you've been involved with, but certainly possibly I want to welcome you back to, uh, helping out with town governments. We haven't voted yet, but.
Yes.
So thank you.
Would you like a motion? I guess, what do you know about the Western Woods?
Uh, they're uphill from where I live. I've, uh, sometimes bike and walk through them. I've come out onto Grapevine and so I've explored them probably as much as, uh, most people in town, not everybody, but.
Because one of the things that the, I believe the Open Space and Rec is currently working on is identifying owners and trying to protect.
I almost brought that up, that's right.
And, and that's, that's something that, that Jeff, Bob or Turner has been working on, um, and I hope. Identify parcels. Assuming that the rest of us vote to, don't decide to throw you out.
I, I look forward to that.
Anyone else? Yes, then I will take a motion.
I move that the Select Board appoint Morgan Evans to the Open Space and Rec Committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussions? Brian?
Yes.
Becky? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay, now, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As usual, I have skipped something. We are supposed to go over our action items and, um, are there action items? The action items for tonight seem to be on our agenda. Is there anything that needs to be dealt with or is not on the list that anyone can think of?
We do have, um, the Wayfinding Committee or, or group that is, has been meeting. We were supposed to meet tomorrow night, um, but there was a little mix-up, so we won't be, but should we have that on here?
Report from the Wayfinding Committee. Would you like to do that, um, on the 18th or April Fool's Day?
How about, how about if, um, I'm not sure when we actually will be meeting, so I'm not sure the 18th, we were.
We only have, seem to have, only have one thing on for the first of April.
All right, let's go to April Fool's Day.
Anything else from anyone else?
Cause there are time constraints on that grant. I mean, it's supposed to be done in four months, am I right, Debbie?
Yeah.
So, but, um, we should be okay, I think, with April. And that's, and that's.
Okay, the next item is a request for LGBTQ plus progress flag on the town bicycle in June. And that necessarily includes our taking a proclamation, recognizing that Ju- June is, um, a Human Rights Month. Does someone else know specific about what that is? Yes.
I, I'm sorry to do this, but it, it says that that's supposed to be at seven and there might not be.
That's right, you're right.
So I think.
Okay. Right, thank you.
You can do liaisons.
We can do liaisons.
Especially that's perhaps.
Let's, let's see what the liaison, right now. Brian?
Parks and Rec. The, well, what's, sort of being discussed, um, there, Cheryl does have a number of options as far as type of screening. And, uh, she's just waiting for the polls. As we discussed, you know, hopefully get the polls and let everything done, time to, install before the, uh, before March, which is not going to happen. Uh, the fencing will be extended this month, I believe. And then, uh, well, I'm not going to make a decision on which of the, uh, sound is attenuating, screening is, is best suited. And there are a number of good, I, I've seen the pictures, the, the, there are a number of good, uh, options. I don't know if you want it with you before they make a decision.
What do people think?
I think we probably should, yeah.
So I think that's, I'll have to go back to Cheryl.
Can they have something for the 18th?
I can ask tomorrow.
I hate to see them open. I, we're going to see them open with nothing, but at least we have a, should have a path forward.
I'll talk to Cheryl tomorrow. You're on that a bit, haven't.
Okay. Um, I attended the planning board meeting, um, on the 27th and, um, they were continuing to decide, um, or discuss, um, driveways, um, and how that would be, sort of overseen by DPW. They also discussed the, um, task force, open house that they had this Saturday and, the majority of the board felt that was really important to do and there were, um, a couple members who were not in support of that. But they, my understanding, it was very well attended, very well appreciated and well done. And I did, I, I watched, um, some of it and, um, it seemed that people were really appreciative of the information, um, they were presented and began to understand, um, the districts, the overlay districts and how those work. But John can speak more.
Yes, oh, with regard to the Saturday meeting, yes, it, it was well-attended and in particular, I think, well, a lot of the same folks that you see at some of the other meetings were there, but they were additional people. But what impressed me most, I think, were, were the questions that came at the end of the presentations. They were not just automatic, uh, questions, they were questions that people thought about and said, well, what about this? They had to go the extra step or two to come up with these questions. And I thought they were intelligent questions that were not so obvious. So I, I know that people are engaged in this topic, no question, at least the folks there.
About how many people do you think there are?
Oh, gosh.
Seventy, sixteen.
Or that many, maybe fifteen. But I think, I want to say maybe half to two-thirds were what I would call regulars.
Yeah.
And maybe a third were new faces I hadn't seen at some of the meetings. So it's a good start, you know? But out of the thousands of households in Manchester, it's still not enough. So I, I just think the zoning team, um, task force is doing a great job trying different ways to, to communicate to people and, and we all owe it to them to communicate to our home neighbors, you know? Just, I think they need our help to amplify.
Well, that was one of the aspects of the planning board meeting was how to present, accurate information and, and that, that was what they really were trying to focus on. At least that's what my takeaway was, that the information to be, uh, presented at that meeting was really out of the bylaws, pretty straightforward and trying to explain it in a way that was digestible.
Yeah, um, let's see, I think the only liaison meeting I've been through is that Bike and Ped. After our last select board meeting where Chief Fitzgerald presented the pilot on the parking enforcement, um, connected, um, the Bike and Ped team to the chief so they could help with, um, understanding the installation, what's a good installation from a pedestrian safety standpoint for the no parking areas? You know, where they're going to put the safety sticks, how far away from the corner? They have some feedback based on other towns, so just making some connections there. But, um, I think both Bike and Ped and Downtown Improvement were interested in the parking enforcement pilot, um, and, you know, well, there, you know, if there's any help needed that, you know, break the chief's heads or whatever, they're very willing to get engaged and help.
Yeah, a couple of things. Historic District Commission met last week and a presentation was given by the architects for one school street, which we all know is undergoing a, uh, a facelift, a serious facelift. And their intention in general is to bring the building back to about 1810.
Really?
There are parts of it that are like 1780, or I think the back building is older than the front building. And they have pictures that they have acquired from the Manchester Museum and elsewhere with regard to what it looked like at various times. And, uh, there is going to be a, a retail presence on the first floor. So one thing they are doing is they are looking at all of the windows, the period windows of the early 19th century, and they will be probably two over two. Right now, I'd say maybe a third of the windows there are two over two, but a lot of them are like six over six or whatever happened to be the flavor of the year when, when, when windows were being replaced there. They're going back to two over two and then looking very hard at what kind of a picture window goes in there. I saw at least one photo. I don't know how they made photos in 1820. They had a picture, anyway. So they're looking at that and we also have to be conscious of how the windows look elsewhere around Two School Street, Four School Street, et cetera. So it kind of fits in there, but they're sensitive about the windows. The entire building, and it's actually two buildings, as you're probably aware, is going to be returned to Clappards, which is what it was when, uh, when it started. And furthermore, they are, are going to install some sort of an awning on the front, which is what that building looked like. Now, I don't know how you get it to stand up in the winters, of course, the winters in 1820, not easy either, but they're looking into returning it to, uh, having an awning structure on the front. I think in the summer, when the sun sets, the sun's pretty serious coming into that location. So we're all, we all drive by that place, uh, once or twice a day and we'll be seeing progress as it, uh, moves along, but that's the intention.
Now, he's done the, uh, 11th Central, the first building he bought.
Yes.
He did a great job.
The Robarty Building, yes.
Yes. So I mean, it's, it's.
So it's the same guys, so.
It's like zero school and two union, is that?
I, I, what, I don't even, in the address, one, it's one school, right? The corner building? Yeah, yeah, which has 13 apartments, but I think two are going away because they're going to make a retail on the first floor with no parking, so I'm not sure how that's going to work, but that's, that's the plan.
Parking behind Town Hall?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, a little bit of a walk for two hours, so, so we'll see.
Until six o'clock.
Yeah. And, uh, second, Council on Aging, was at a meeting with them, uh, I guess that was last week also. The Golden Agers have a luncheon this coming Saturday and have requested, um, an update with regard to senior center progress, which is, most of you know, is going to be, expect to be an article on our, uh, on our warrant in April. And in fact, I think Greg is going to be there, I think I will be there also. They just want an official update and we're going to maybe show them some plans, some floor plans, a little blown up sort of thing about this is, it's preliminary, but it was something that we had to put together so that, uh, Mason said a feel for how things might.
I would like to go to that as well, but if somebody else isn't planning on it, I won't, so we don't have forum.
What time is it?
Uh, lunch is at noon.
Okay.
Now, she goes, yeah.
Then I'll, I just wanted to make sure we're not.
So, uh, no emergencies in the DPW this week, so.
Good. The school committee hasn't met, we met last because of the school meeting. The MBTA zoning task force meeting quite regularly in, in smaller groups. One group specifically focusing on how to do a design review and, and standards for a design review organization, part of site plan. And there are lots of open questions currently. You get to require a site plan review, you have to have a plan that includes five parking spaces. And there's feeling on the committee, I think, that anyone who's taking advantage, assuming that such a thing were to exist, anyone who is taking advantage of a zoning, overlay district for, um, MBTA zoning would be subject to, to site plan review and design review. And, uh, we have a, a group of very talented and very opinionated architects who are working on this problem. And it's, it's an interesting. It's an interesting problem keeping them focused. But they are actually, they are in fact, coming up with really good ideas because the, the challenge of a design review in Manchester is that what makes Manchester special is it's all different. So how do you establish design standards when the goal is to make them all different? And, and there turn out to probably be answers to that and I think we've got the right to together to find those. As for the other job of the, I don't know, the main job of the task force, um, we're continuing to look at areas of town. We have looked at, I think, all areas of town and we've discussed everything that I can think of. And one of the ideas that's coming out is that many people on the task force are concerned that if we take large parcels, we will get large developments. A two-acre parcel would have a 30-unit apartment building built on it. And that concerns us for, for, and the other side of that is that to keep the development small, we've, we prefer to have them in areas where there are already small lots, which means dense areas. So are we penalizing the people who live in dense areas or are we protecting the town from large developments? And that's a tough question and we are struggling with it. Almost seven o'clock. So we've considered the special events, are there questions on the special events premise? Let's do that, we have a few minutes.
Six fifty-nine, I think we'll be.
Okay. Shall we approve the, is there a motion to approve the special events?
So moved. Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah, Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We're good at seven o'clock.
She was going to sit a long time. She was gonna sit a long time.
She was ready. Especially after that last one.
Should be able to catch up. So the next is a request for a progress flag on the town black ball. I think it's over here.
Is this going to be is this both the progress flag and the human rights together?
I just did it in succession on one.
I'm just asking.
Is it possible that we could discuss the progress flag separately because on our agenda, they are two separate items?
Oh, no, absolutely. I just did it in one another stop.
Okay, that's good, because we've got another.
You know, turn it for the presentations for you to log in on the Zoom. It would, it would be better for the people who are at home to see your presentation if you did it through the Zoom.
Yeah, it's if you can go on Zoom, hope this is.
The guest, there should be a guest one. Well, I mean.
Just wanna go to Zoom.
Unless you're very good at typing a bunch of random numbers and letters.
Yeah, I know, it's a lot.
The top one. And go into government. All down to select. Right there. Click again, just once, just once. Yep. Lunch meeting.
Recording in progress.
You might wanna get rid of your. Yeah, people disconnect this and then you can, you gotta turn down your plane. Or me, yeah, I'm muted.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for passing everything I've asked for now because I got on. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Hopa Wu Chi, my pronouns are she and her. I'm a Manchester resident. I reside in my childhood home here in Manchester. I'm a veteran. I'm a two-time past commander of the American Legion here in Manchester by the Sea. And I'm also the founder and president of North Shore Pride. And so tonight I'm asking for approval as we have done in three, I think it's now three consecutive years to raise the progress flag, progress flag being the most current flag of the LGBTQ plus community. And I'm here this evening, sorry, with my wife Lisa Wu Chi. And we're asking to raise it on the same slide pole that we raised it on for three years consecutively. And so the reason that we do this, for people who haven't heard of Next Benedict, a sixteen year old non-binary trans student in in Osso, Colorado recently assaulted in the bathroom of the school, which was on an Indian reservation because of the way that they were dressed, because they're non-binary. And the next day, Next lost their life. And so that's the reason why I started North Shore Pride was because of hate crimes and against our community here, and we know that legislative hate crimes are going up exponentially, being proposed exponentially and passing exponentially. The rights of trans, of our trans community are being revoked. The rights of our LGBTQ plus youth are being revoked. And so that is why we will raise the progress flag in honor of people like Next Benedict, in honor of our youth, in honor of our community. And to make people aware that when we raise the progress flag in towns and cities across this country as well as in other countries, what the message we're sending is, we're accepting of you. We're a town that's welcoming, a town or city that's welcoming of your community. And that you are welcome here, so. So what I'm asking for is to raise the flag on June first of this year, which I believe is a Saturday this year. We would do, just in terms of the program, what it would, what it would look like, we would do a land acknowledgement for Manchester. We would ask that Manchester Essex High School GSA or the equivalent thereof, those students would raise the flag or we would invite them to come and raise the flag. And we would encourage tabling by the now new device, whatever we're calling it, Manchester Cultural Council, as well as the welcoming committee, of which I'm a member of that committee in Manchester. And we would also encourage a campaign proud to support by our local businesses. So we would provide them with progress flag stickers to put on the windows of their businesses to let the community, our community know that they are a welcoming business for our community. And if you want to do the research and see how much money our community spends in towns and cities, we're pretty high up there, so we would do that to promote our community visiting those businesses. We do it in other towns and cities throughout the North Shore as well as throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's what it would look like. So that's what I'm asking for this this evening. As a member, as a resident of of this town, as well as the founder and president of North Shore Pride Incorporated, a nonprofit organization which has been in existence for now, it's our thirteenth year. Last year at a big festival and parade in Salem, we had thirty thousand people in attendance. So that's my request. I appreciate your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, I I just might make a, make a comment and about a year ago, or a little less than that, this flag is going up, of course, on the memorial, of the town flag pole, quote unquote, that is in the, in the memorial. And last year, the select board decided that it would not put up a second flag pole, that the flag would go up on the current flag pole, and I am a hundred percent behind flying the pride flag. However, my first choice is to erect another flag pole elsewhere in the common on which the pride flag and other commemorative flags, should they come down the pipe, be flown. I kept track of what's been going on with regard to flag poles in communities in Massachusetts over the past two or three years since the Boston, since the Boston case. And there are about fourteen or fifteen communities, of which we are one, that put together policies specifically for flags. Three or four of those communities said, we're not dealing with commemorative flags, we're just not flying any. There are another three or four that said, yeah, we're flying commemorative flags, and as you're probably aware, or most of us are, I think, it must be considered government speech before you can fly them. Those, those flags, they just don't say exactly where they, they are flown, on what flag poles. But about half, maybe a little bit more than half of those communities have said, yes, we fly commemorative flags on flag poles that the United States flag does not fly on. And that's the position that I take. I think we should do that and put a flag pole somewhere and do that. We're kind of in, in a, in a more difficult position because of the law of unintended consequences. We had a town flag pole and it became a memorial flag pole. And we didn't really think about that, but that's what happened several years ago. And so our town flag pole become, became part of the memorial.
Becky?
Yeah.
Okay, Becky was on the board at the time that happened.
Okay, yes.
And that is actually not quite what happened. Because the, it was discussed that the flag pole was going on the town common, on town property. It is the town flag pole. And so that's, it it was done with knowing that that we might have other flags being requested to be flown. I, so, so just to modify that a little bit, it, it was never designated to be just the, the memorial flag pole, that it's on town property. We discussed this. And again, the town common. My feeling is, since we're kind of talking about that a little bit, and this is a proclamation that we are looking to approve that would therefore enable another flag to be flown. I would like to think that when we talk about, and I come from a long military family, my father's a veteran, my brother's a veteran, my husband's a veteran. When someone goes to fight for freedom, I would hope that what they're fighting for is freedom for everybody, not this person, not that person, definitely not those. Isn't that what we're about in this country? And so I, I just, the flag pole was erected on town property and the town common. And if we start putting up a separate flag pole, we're separating what we as a community and a country stand for. I mean, that's not that we're going to put every single flag up there. We have a proclamation process. This, the pride flag has been flown for some time now. We have a precedence there for that. And anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll notice all the local community towns and cities that already have their progress flag flying schedule and approved.
Well, and many of those are on the list that have put together flag policies. There are a number, they don't have flag policies, they just put up the flag. I'm just saying there'll be more and more towns that will kind of wrestle with this commemorative flags versus US flags. And my position is, I just think the US flag should be on a separate flag pole. That's all. I have no problem with other flags being on other flag pole, in particular the gay pride flag. The pride, pride month flag, I think, I'm, I I certainly endorse that it should be flown somewhere here on town. No, the POW flag, I think, goes up with the US flag, that's it. I wouldn't, that's, that's there.
Mike, I am going to take comments from the board until the board is tired of speaking, and then I will recognize other people.
I'm just repeating things I've said in the past. I'm reluctant to use flag pole for anything other than a municipal flag. It's got nothing to do with any one particular cause, but I think it's a slippery slope, it opens up the door. And, you know, the other problems, the other side of that is I'm also reluctant to turn Town Hall into a into just a forest of of flag poles, okay? I think that the precedent has been set, but just my feelings is that municipal flags, state, you know, federal, state, municipal flags should be only displayed on, because the town hall is, it should be, someone's, might be offended by something, okay?
And and we have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do make a proclamation, and and I, in the past, I think it has been unanimously approved.
Yes, and I, you know, I have the last two votes, I think the last one vote I was on, I voted for. I'm just, you know, as long as John's mentioning his feelings, that's my feeling. I'm just reluctant to, you know, that's my.
So to whom does the land belong? The land on which the current flag pole stands. All the people.
The people of Manchester.
Four months a year.
Okay, and I just, and again, this is not about the, the progress flag, this is about all of them. Okay, I just, the, I just think that it's not using town property as an advertisement vehicle. No, I'm just saying.
You may shut down.
Perhaps, perhaps, I'm sorry that word offended you, but it's, it's okay for every group that wants to fly a flag.
Do you have a protocol for that?
I understand. I'm just saying, you asked me my opinion.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
The exact same conversation we had last year. I like the progress flag where it is on the same pole, I'm good with that. It's town property, not the property of a memorial, to the best of my understanding. If someone wants to correct me on that and some other group in town owns the land that that flag pole is on, I will revisit my position. But if that is town property, we have a process for approving flags, we follow the process, we get the proclamation approved, put the flag up. I'm good with that. And I genuinely concur, but I am willing to hear from anyone. I'll take people in the room first. We do have a schedule. And so I would ask people to be brief. Yes. Stand up, identify yourself.
Bruce H C, forty-nine Pleasant Street in Manchester, part of the committee to erect the Veterans' Honor Roll. For the sole purpose of dedicating a flag and a pure death flag to the veterans from the town of Manchester. And that was the sole purpose of donation, when we had our donation to the town, that this flag pole is a rep, paid by a family member for the, for the purpose of the Veterans' Honor Roll. And so, and the current flag pole does not, is not suitable, is not tall enough to support three flags. So you cannot lower the flag at a half mast, half staff, because the, the beads are hitting the lights, that's why the lights have been out for the last three or four months, they're not working. They've been breaking the wires around the support holder light, so there's a lot of things wrong with flying in three flags. And so I am not against the gay, the gay pride flag at all. And the committee is not, but it's just not on the Veterans' Honor Roll. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
That John said, forty-eight Pleasant Street. I'm certainly not opposed to the pride flag. I sent an email to the board, I, I hope you received it. And it's, I agree that the, uh, I think the town should erect another flag pole for, I've seen in other places, flag staff that would be on the columns, which would give many groups a chance to use that. Um, I do not believe that any other flag other than the new fit's got should be flown on with the American flag. Uh, it, it shouldn't be this. And if you want to look up, one of the best sites to look at is under the Department of the Army, uh, Institute of Heraldry, eight, eight, four, zero, dash, one, zero. And it will give you regulations about flying the flag. And I just, um, not opposed at all. And in my email, I think a flag pole on the town common or flag staff on the columns of the town hall would be a good venue to, to view them. And they could encourage other groups, like, you know, there's some break, some town conservation, the school that, that should maybe should be recognized, uh, for scholastic achievements, uh, women's sports. Just put a flag on, on, you know, on the, on a column, on the flag staff. And also I did mention, um, maybe the town would consider putting a flag pole at Massimo Park, would be a beautiful place for either, by the statue or the band state or someone visiting.
Thank you.
And Becky? Who pays for the electricity?
Greg?
Yeah, let's see the town.
Anyone else want to speak in the room?
Yes.
Hi, Kim Kahan, twelve North Street. Um, could you please tell me what this flag is, everything, what does it represent?
It's a progress flag.
Well, I know what it is. Um, I would like you to tell everyone exactly what all the lines is and who is included on this flag. Uh, is, is MAPS included?
I, I, no, I am running this meeting, you are not. And, um, your information, you can get your information um, elsewhere unless you can explain to us why you think that information is germane to our decision.
Um, I don't think everyone knows exactly what that flag is, means.
Okay, let me, let me, no, let me poll the board. Do you know what that flag means, Brian?
Yes.
Becky? Yes. Kathy? Yes. I do.
Yeah.
And John does. So we are the ones who are making a decision tonight. So we do understand that flag.
Okay.
Now you may proceed.
Could you tell me what the flag means? Cause I don't. Does it include the MAPS, M A P S? Could you please tell me? Cause, cause from what I know about the flag, M A P S is in the flag. So that's my understanding, and you said you understood the flag?
How is it the purple circle?
Well, I'm asking them. Since they're putting the flag up, they should know what it stands for. And who is included in that flag? A minor attracted people included in the flag.
Or do you want me to speak?
Um, I think you could give it to us more precisely than.
Um, the progress flag is the current flag reflective of the LGBTQ plus community.
I think the question really is minor attracted persons.
The, the purple circle within that, uh, flag is for intersex community. Um, the white, blue and pink represents the trans community, transgender community, excuse me. The brown and the black represent, uh, the BIPOC LGBTQ plus community. So black indigenous people of color. And then the red, that's supposed to be orange, doesn't translate very well. This green, yellow, green, blue and purple are taken from the original flag, uh, that was um, established in nineteen seventy-six.
So you are an expert on this?
Oh, I wouldn't say expert, but yeah.
Um, is any of that, does any of that include minor attracted persons?
I don't know what a minor attractive person is. I don't know what you mean, but I don't know what you mean by that.
I never heard that either.
Are pedophiles included on that?
You could just look up a MAPS, that's all.
Are you asking me are pedophiles?
No, we were having a, we were having a conversation between.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes. Sure.
Um, so back to Becky's question about, um, who's paying for electricity? Well, the Veterans' Honor Roll Committee has paid for the extra bordering around, um, and the lights damaged that were hit by the town hall. And also the extra needs that were added on the honor roll. So they're still paying for that stuff.
And then the town maintains the.
No, actually, they, they were doing the town, uh, doing the bridge there work and then
I mean, on the, on the.
And the grass cutting and trimming around the new wall, and they're having the trees, or they're doing doodles. And it's all the basic sonic policy.
Is there anyone not in? Is there anyone not in the room who would like to speak?
I don't see.
Crystal. Condeks?
No, I guess. Hi, yes. I'm Crystal Kandakis, I live at three Moses Hill Road. Um, and I just wanted to speak for, um, the young people of our town. I'm the parent of a gay daughter. Um, we have lived here for twenty-plus years and I was actually active in helping Hope, uh, get the flag raised initially in twenty eighteen. Um, and I just wanted to say how special it makes me and my daughter and our whole family feel during the month of June, when we drive by and see the pride or the progress flag flying. Um, I, it makes me well up with tears sometimes. It just, it's so important to us. Um, and I think it really says a lot about our town and our community to other communities and other people. Um, and I hope the board will take that into consideration and, and making this decision tonight and, and moving forward also. Thank you.
Let's see, okay.
I would, I would hope to see a separate poll, and I think it would be just as special or more special for groups that wish to fly them. Let, you know, that would be in the role of like.
Thank you.
I also had a comment.
Yes.
Um, about Dax. She mentioned Dax, the boy who killed him, pal?
Next.
Next, his name was, okay, so I apologize for the name, but I, I haven't followed that case. The children didn't kill him, he committed suicide.
Um, I, excuse me, you're way out of line.
I'm sorry.
For this discussion.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry. I was just saying, let it spread.
I think what this was.
I just want to say that, um.
No, don't, let, let me reiterate what I think you said, which was that he was attacked. He was attacked in the bathroom, that they were attacked in the bathroom and died the next day.
Later done.
You did not say.
That's correct. I did not, but that's not what I was gonna say too. But sure, I just wanted to say that, um, I'm also an active duty army veteran, United States Army veteran. And, uh, I've flown three flags on my flag pole, um, continuously, so. Just want to comment, and I know the rules of the flag line.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to hear?
Is this by your home or?
No, don't, you do not get to cross-question people. You address it to me and then I will pass your question on. And you have to, first, you have to explain, give me your name and your address.
Dominic Maruzzi, twenty-six School Street.
Thank you.
Manchester by the Sea.
Excellent. No.
All right. Can you, uh, clarify, you've been flying three flags? Uh, I imagine that's American, right? And then LGBTQ flag, is that at your home or at a army base?
I, I.
She was just saying she has knowledge of doing that.
Let me, let me just say, we're, we're trying to decide.
And if I'm, if I could just interject here, um, the way that, you know, the meeting such as this runs, we have bylaws and rules to which we must adhere. Comments go through the chair to the chair. And then if somebody has a question for somebody in the room, the question is directed to the chair, who will then get the question answered.
And I guess I would ask the board, um, do you consider what, um, Hope flies at her home to be germane to this discussion?
No. No.
Thank you. Are there any other?
Mike Shaw, twelve North Street. Why does it have to be on that poll? Why can't it be another poll erected like Brian said, like this gentleman said? And she seems to get very upset when you say it flies anyplace but the town.
Uh, that's out of order.
What's that?
No, most of what you said is, is fine and interesting. The reaction of another person in the audience is not germane to this discussion. Um, so.
Well, she seems to be upset at the fact that
I don't care.
Like what she wants to do with the flag pole.
And you don't like what she wants to do and, fine, I don't think.
Everyone's coming up with, everyone had, everyone has come up with a good idea, a separate flag pole, not flying with the American flag and the town hall.
Thank you.
And.
We, we.
Someone wants to spend on it.
We have ordered, just a moment. We have considered a separate flag pole, I think, twice in the past two years.
That's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, and we have, in the previous discussions, not found a reasonable place. Um, we have turned down all of the, the board has turned down all of the suggestions for another poll.
For any of a number of reasons.
For many, many numbers, many of, you know, this is not a new topic. Um, we have one poll.
What month would I be able to fly my nice Christian flag?
Um, any month that you can convince us that that's a, a core value of a town.
Pride flag is the core value of a town, or is it?
Uh, uh, yes. We're, we're, we're.
Or LGBTQ plus town.
We are putting together a pro, we will put together a proclamation recognizing June as, um, progress month.
It's only twelve months in a year.
We can, there's no reason.
Like we discussed different flags, I mean, there's gonna be different people wanting different flags. There's only twelve months in a year. They get a whole month, they get their flag out. Um, and we have to fight to maybe see a Christian flag somewhere or, uh.
She had to fight to put her flag up and, and it was not easy. The first year was difficult. Um.
My, my comment, yeah. Based upon what happened with the Supreme Court discuss, decision, you cannot put up flags associated with political affiliations. You're not put up flags that are associated with advertising, and you cannot put up religious flags. So, anything else? And it still leaves a lot of real estate. Other things are, are legitimate, but those, the Supreme Court has said, you know, that this is a church-state thing when it comes to religious flags. Some would say it's a religion. Yeah, well.
In a different area.
That's right.
So it's.
Yes, Mr. Shagman.
Uh, what, um, areas are not acceptable, like, um, the town common for another poll? I mean, is, is any, uh, I would say areas that are large enough to put a poll around, um, of the other.
Oh, we're not.
That's not the discussion we're having tonight. We've discussed putting another poll up and we have not found a place that we were willing to agree to.
And if I may, Madam Chair, we, because it's not on the agenda, we cannot discuss that. We cannot, that's not what we're discussing tonight. And that is how the bylaws run. We cannot discuss the flag.
Where have these other, where have these places been that you have? That you have?
Ms. Jakes is absolutely correct, and I have been remiss in allowing discussion of the second poll.
So, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, if the board feels that they want to revisit, obviously, the second poll question, then you could certainly put that on a subsequent agenda.
Yes. Okay.
May I make a motion?
Um, I've been very, I'm very. People have spoken many times, I think we have, yes, you may make a motion.
I move that the select board proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ month. LGBTQ plus month? Is the plus go there, okay?
Thank you.
In the town of Manchester by the Sea and sign a proclamation to be presented on June first.
Second.
Uh, okay.
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anyone?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's the proclamation. Next question, is there a motion about the flag?
I think that.
Okay, you think that covers?
That covers it, yes. You, you can't fly a flag until you get a proclamation.
I think it's appropriate to do a step.
We have a proclamation now. Is there a motion, um, to fly the flag on the, the town common flag pole? Fly, fly the progress flag on the town common flag pole, so. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian?
Can you keep them with the flag policy, yes?
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And says, yes?
I say, yes.
Okay. Thank you all for your time and your comments. Um, not all decisions go. Not all decisions are easy, and this is one that's not. So it has been made. Thank you. Okay, now we go on to the question, which is also yours of, uh, actually, we're, this is a larger discussion of town committees. I think we should take up, make you sit for another moment and take up the question of the governance project's desire of recommendation that the power, um, gets the number of independent committees under control. And I think I'd like Greg to start this discussion.
So we, we, um, we have a large number of committees. We have over two hundred resident voluntary, which is, which is great. Um, wide representation. Uh, but we have a number of committees that have either, uh, finished their work and, and really are no longer needed or that they have been inactive in the last few years. And probably in the case that we don't need that committee any longer. So there are three committees that I believe, you know, you're comfortable recommending that you, that you terminate, that you don't need anymore. Um, the animal control committee, which has been, uh, inactive for a number of years now. Uh, we have, you know, have not had people volunteering to serve on that committee. I don't think we have suffered from the lack of that committee. You, you serve as the hearing officers for any animal complaints anyways, even with an animal control committee. And so, uh, I believe that's one committee that, that can be eliminated. Um, you talked about the, the Manchester Energy Efficiency Program in the past and have felt that they'd finished up their work. Uh, you could just confirm your discussions in the past to, to formally, uh, and that committee as well. Its work can be picked up by the Sustainability Committee. And then a third committee, the House Numbering Committee. I believe that can be a staff function with the town clerk, the assessors in the police department, which is, which is where the advice and decision-making has, has been in the last few years. Uh, so there are, those are three committees that I believe make sense to, uh, to review. Uh, and then moving on, there are a couple of committees that I believe could be made advisory, made less formal and become advisory to department leaders so that, um, so under state law, if, if the department leader uh, wishes to have some input from a, from residents, but really is making a decision on his or her own, then, then you can go to this more informal approach where it's advisory to, uh, department leader and therefore not, um, subject to the full requirements of open legal in terms of posting agendas, making. um, subject to the full requirements of open meeting law in terms of posting agendas, making minutes. It's, it's a less formal arrangement. And so two that come to mind for this are the Seaside One Committee. Again, it could become advisory to DPW or Facilities. Um, the manager, Nate DeRosa. And similarly, the ADA Committee could become a less formal advisory to, to the facility manager in DPW. Uh, so those are two possibilities there. Um, and then there are the possibility of, of having subcommittees transfer to becoming subcommittees as part of larger committee. And again, this in an effort to streamline some of the communications and, and the work of those subcommittees. So instead of having, for example, the first one, the Chewbacca Woods Committee as a standalone committee, it can become a subcommittee of either the Open Space Committee or Park and Rec. Uh, so the, the sort of chain of command would look that it becomes a subcommittee, it would report to the full committee and then the recommendations from the full committee that will come to you. And so it's, uh, it just provides a little more uh communications and coordination of, of that committee well. Uh, and so three possibilities here, as I just said, the Chewbacca Woods. Uh, Fourth July Committee could be, become a subcommittee of Park and Rec. Uh, and the Stream Team could be a subcommittee of Conservation Commission.
When you make something with subcommittee, how does the appointment work?
So typically, the, the umbrella committee makes the appointments to the subcommittee.
Okay, so we would. Okay.
Yes, so that would um relieve you of some appointment responsibilities.
Yes.
So I have a, I have a question. So are subcommittee members also committee members?
Not necessarily.
They're not carved out necessarily?
At least, at least one needs to be a member of the, of the bigger committee. But the subcommittees uh can be comprised of the mother committee, if I can use that phrase.
So those people that aren't, they would be appointed by the committee members?
Yes.
And we wouldn't be involved in that.
Correct.
They would be whatever their criteria are.
Yeah.
They would do that. And the advisory groups, and I, I had a little problem with the definition of all of these things.
Yeah.
The advisory groups are groups that advise departments, not committees.
Correct.
Okay, so that's directly to one of the.
The department head.
What, one of, one of the department heads?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Or key, or key staff member, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a handle on, I mean, the objective here is to streamline things. And the other one is, can we shrink things down a little bit?
Right.
Because we have too many spaces and not necessarily enough people to fill them.
If I can add a little.
Please.
Color to this, because I did the first pass and made some recommendations to Greg. And committees that were kind of flagged for me are committees that, like you talked about animal control. I, I looked through all of the minutes and all of the agendas they hadn't met in five years.
Yes.
Right? Um, so other opportunities like the advisory groups, if we could make some of these committees advisory groups, you eliminate the town clerk from getting involved in their process of posting their meetings, posting their minutes, chasing them down if they haven't posted their minutes. You know, it's, it's a, an administrative um task and pull on the town clerk's office. And so where it makes sense to have an advisory group, because if they're, if these committees are really talking to Chuck all the time or Nate, then they really should be an advisory group to that function. And then that eliminates the town clerk's office from having to, you know, chase after them and, and follow the open meeting law um type stuff.
If they're not quasi judicial.
Right. They don't, they don't make decisions, they're advisors.
Right, and that, yeah.
Who appoints the advisors on the?
To be the, the lead.
So it would be Nate, the staff person would select the people he wants to advise. Okay.
As a decision. I'm in advisory role, there is no, um. The town staff is not uh involved to the extent of uh posting.
Mm-hmm, right, exactly.
So we're eliminating a lot of the, the work and they're also not uh, open meeting is not uh an issue at that point. It seems like a lot more done, a lot, lot less forms, a lot less.
Now, no, I still would, I would still advocate that for the advisory groups, that there be an open, you know, posting process to get people, you know, onto those advisory groups from a, a wide path. But what we wanted not have.
Solicit.
Solicit members, right? The volunteers, we want to make sure people are welcome to uh participate. But it's, it's all of that bureaucracy around the town clerk's office, you know, publishing the minutes and publish, posting the meetings and rescheduling meetings if someone forgot to post the meeting and it, it, it takes a lot of time.
So those advisory groups, they're, they're, they're not part of that picture as Kathy has just described. Never, you've got two that you've put in that category.
No.
Yeah, there, there may be a few.
There may be a few more.
All right, this is an opening pass.
So I have a question.
Someone's got to go slowly.
Yeah.
Becky, when we talk about, um, for example, task force, which is advisory.
Task force, um, we have different definition for that because it was more of a project. It has a defined beginning and an end.
I just wanted to make sure because those are meetings which should be.
Yes, yeah.
Following open meeting law.
Yeah, these, these ones that we had recommended be converted to advisory, uh, we're not um recommending they become task forces because they don't become, they don't have a defined beginning and defined end. It's not a project related, they're ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Yeah.
So I had a question. Our come Parks and Rec Department is under one category and Parks and Rec Committee is under another.
In, in, in this.
Yeah. I understand it's tough, tough to take some of these groups and put them in categories.
I'm sorry, let's try, I just want to make sure I'm looking.
Parks and Rec, under your first slide, community development.
Not my slide, so.
Oh, they are?
No, 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 no.
They came off the government, governance.
Yes, it was in.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, because it has it under community development slash planning.
Oh, these were, um.
Oh, oh, actually, these are groupings.
The groupings, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, these were groupings to help these committees understand who is like them that they may want more frequently. That was the purpose of these slides.
Okay, that explains why the select board is, didn't make the list.
Yes, yes.
Nobody wants to talk that.
I just needed, I wanted something to, like, something of a head of all committees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Further discussion, um, of, um. Right, I just had it, of the committees that Greg listed, um, I suggest that we have three separate motions. Um, one for the animal control of Manchester Energy Efficiency and the House Numbering Committee to eliminate them.
I move to retire. I like, I like the word retire.
Yeah.
I was struggling to come up with that.
I move to retire. The Animals Control Committee, Manchester Energy Efficiency Program Committee and House Numbering Committee with the great thanks of the select board for their service.
Second. For the discussion? John?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Yes.
Kathy says yes?
Yes.
Kathy says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a motion for Seaside One and ADA to become advisory boards to the facility manager?
So moved.
Second.
For the discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
Anne says yes.
Um, is there a motion to move the Chewbacca Woods, the Fourth of July and the Spring Team groups um to become uh, in some committees of respectively, um, Open Space, Parks and Rec and ConCom. And we can say Chewbacca Woods becomes a subcommittee of Open Space. Fourth of July becomes a subcommittee of Parks and Rec. And the Stream Team becomes a subcommittee of the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
For the discussion? John?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Okay.
Just a quick question. Now, I don't, one of any of you know, those, so those last three groups just became subcommittees. Is there at least one person from each of the committees to which they've been assigned that's on those?
We've got Morgan here.
That'll answer.
Welcome to the class.
They're the questions.
I, I am sure that the Fourth of July Committee.
Fourth of July Board, right here.
Cheryl's on both.
Cheryl's on both?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just asking, so, I mean, we're, I'm not saying halfway there.
There may be some logistics involved and I would, Debbie is the process owner for communicating to our boards and committees. Um, but in this situation, Greg, how would you like the communication? Because this, this is different than a standard communication that Debbie would normally send out. How would you like the communication to go to these various committees, the decisions that we just made?
Be appropriate for me.
Okay.
And or, and do it for, we might do a joint one.
And, and in the letter, we'll include what I left out of the motions, which is that we appreciate the work they're doing and hope.
That was on the first one, yes. Oh, yes, on the second one, so absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Now, the second part of the discussion of needed committees and request to establish a human rights committee. Only, nevermind. Um, so this is you, so that's the second.
Decreasing committees. To consider adding a committee or whatever you, you so decide. Um, so, um, the human rights, I just gave you a, a brief definition of uh human rights and then we'll. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to give you examples of our towns and cities in our community that actually have town sanctioned human rights commissions or committees or councils. So, um, and you can see their mission and their goal. Um, they're all pretty much the same, so if which has one.
I, I appreciate your moving through this quickly.
Very quickly. Beverly has one. Danvers has a very extensive one. Gloucester has a human rights commission. And they involve their students as well in the high school. Hamilton, Winham has a combined human rights uh commission. Go ahead. Uh, Salem has a human rights commission. Um, and then a list of all the committees that we have, I just went through and, and the second page at least.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just went through and, um, just to check to see if we have anything that equivocates to a human rights commission. And, um, we don't, so tonight that is my ask and have to discuss for the sake of time.
Thank you.
Let's sit down.
Are there questions from the board?
I guess, I, I have some thoughts.
Okay, I always go first, I'll let you.
No, thanks. So as you can see, we just went through a process.
I know.
For trying to under, I guess, I can call it, get our arms around the committees and all of the great volunteers that we have. And one of the things I learned from going through that process is how many volunteers we have in town, more volunteers than town employees. So, um, as we went through the decision-making process for our recommendations, one of the things we looked for were very clear charters for the committees.
Sure.
And a way of determining whether or not the committees are achieving their goals. So in other words, if we were to set up a human rights committee, what does success look like? How could we tell if it's working? And do you have any specific objectives that you could articulate? Uh, what, what problem are we trying to solve? I think that's, here, what would be helpful.
Um, I think you'll see it in the definition of all the other missions there. But, um, basically it would, in my thought would be that it would, uh, the, the process might be that we get together like-minded individuals, typically, um, in other towns and cities, the human rights commissioner councils are represented by faith leaders in our community, by school, uh, employees, uh, people who sit on school boards or whatever. Um, to come together and people like myself who, who, um, sit on a, a pride organization and other organizations and come together and, and make sure that there's equity and inclusion in the town programming and town events. Uh, for example, Black History Month might be one example, other, I can think of a million other examples. But come together and present programming and things like that. For the town be a resource for the town as well, for any concerns or complaints with regard to those parameters. And, but I really think it's, you know, several steps to go through. They, I think the committee or council would develop, you know, the charter, uh, to you, Madam Chair, the charter for what that, and then present it to the select board for approval or consideration.
Sorry, go ahead. Um, so. That all sounds great.
The answer should come from me particularly. I think that they should come from, uh, you know, a group that wants to sit on the committee or council and.
So it's been my experience in the private sector.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've seen this done really, really well.
Mm-hmm.
Also seen it done not so well.
Mm-hmm.
And when it's done really, really well, those committees have very clear objectives they're trying to achieve, right? So whether it's representation in, in hiring or a reduction in complaints on discrimination, there's something specific because of, you know, the culture or something that's not working. And so you, you put together this committee to help people feel included and, and, and solve a problem.
Sure.
I'm not clear. I'm still not clear what we would be asking this committee to do. That's what, where my discomfort is right now.
Okay, I'm, I'm happy to come back to the select board with that. I, I wanted to, you know, the, the definitions and missions of all of those cities and towns and their human rights commission and council uh, pretty much are the same. And so I would come back, uh, with that measure. I, but again, I don't think that should be just me. I, I would, I'm happy to form a group of people who maybe might want to work on this.
See, and the reason it's important, I just want to clarify a little further why I think it's really important is because, um, what I learned is that every committee of volunteers pulls on town resources in one way or another. In ways I didn't know about before I took this role. So before we say yes to another committee, we need some clarification on what we want to achieve and what town resources that might pull on. Because if we have to go ask town meeting for, you know, a budget to, to support it.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
I don't know how to do that right now.
Yeah, makes perfect sense. Um, I, I did start an organization, a nonprofit organization, so I'm, I'm very good at objectives. And, and we've been in existence for 13 years, so, um, I'm happy to do that. I was just looking, I know I, I presented this before and I think it was Brian, so that they would do it informally. And I haven't seen any work done on that, so that's why I just brought it before the, the board again.
Becky, what, what was the name of the young woman?
Lindsay Banks.
Yeah, Lindsay Banks.
Uh-huh.
Um. Yeah, Lindsay's worked mostly, from my understanding, mostly with the schools, uh, on school issues. But this is more of a community-based, uh, or depth within the entire community as opposed to just a little my off.
I have the same concerns as Kathy.
Sure.
And, yeah, and I, I, I think that, um, not just the mission statement, but, um.
The question is, are we addressing, is something we're addressing? Is there a concern that we are addressing?
Well, a concern about what's happening in the community that's not being addressed. This community, this committee would help with.
And then just to, to that point, another layer of bureaucracy. Okay, and stressing town, uh, assets is a concern. That was one of the reasons you waited up this year now, for the years since you came.
Yeah.
A year?
So, and it took us, it took, it took this long for this, uh, okay, to, to, to call this down, okay?
So have you done anything? You said you did.
We just did, we just voted on.
No, 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 I meant, um, you had said.
We, we, we.
Yeah.
A little tempo of, of back and forth.
No, we, uh, we wanted to see, I believe, where the town was and whether or not this is something that the town wanted to take on as, as a committee. And we're still in that process at this point.
Well, the, the action I recall, which we did, was I was uncomfortable with setting up a new committee until we addressed the committees that we already had. And that was the action that we, I think we took as a board, and we just completed that tonight.
Okay.
So.
Well, before I recognize, John, I have a couple of, of just procedural. We are working to make all committees three-year appointments. It's just a lot easier if it's the same range. I am concerned about your desire to include a lot of town employees. Our town employees are very, yes, you, police department, school department.
I'm just saying, that's an example of what some of the other towns and cities.
I, I think, and, and, uh, the suggestion that the committee would respond to incidents, incidents of hate bias and discrimination. I think that's a heavy load to put on some, on volunteers. And these are just, you know, kind of routine matters, um, and, and not philosophical. John?
Yeah, so question, Hope, this document that you sent to us, certainly you produced this. You're not a one-person show.
Please, no, God, no.
I mean, if we said go, would you be able to put together a committee of seven, eight, nine people right away? I mean, I mean, it, you know, when you start something like this, it's, you know, yeah, it starts with one person, but it has to go from there. And because we have, are so challenged, at any point in time, there are dozens of slots that are empty here. I don't know if that's because people, you know, volunteerism isn't what it should be, or if it's because, say, some of the stuff that's open isn't interesting to them, I'm, I don't. But we're all, we're, we're short on people.
No, I understand that, I, I was only an open goal.
Oh, oh, you were.
I'm on the fourth July, I'm on the committee, and I'm on the welcoming.
So I have, uh, yeah, I know you've been involved in quite a few things, and you know the challenges that are, that are involved. But, i- in other words, you have kind of a groundswell of interest of, well, like-minded people that see a challenge, and I might join some of my colleagues and say, I, it's not clear to me what the challenge is here. Is this a solution looking for a problem? Or we got problems?
I think it's more representation and, uh, the availability of a committee to hear concerns and complaints.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, I, I think we still need to have a better understanding of what support would be needed. Just in terms of, of the various committees and organizations we have. And how they function for the town and where the support comes. Whether it's from staff, financing from town meeting. And I think we need, we, we don't have enough information.
Yeah, so what I would suggest, if I could make a suggestion, I would say we need a, a proposal, right? Which has clear objectives, what would you anticipate to achieve in year one? You're getting, you know, just some specificity. Also, I would encourage you to consider starting small. Right, ten people just sounds too large for this town. Based on what I've learned about all the other committees that we have. Small is better. So, um, specific charter objectives, what your team might look like and what you would hope to achieve after the first year or the second year. So we could then take a look and say, okay, did we do a, did this have the intended effect? Right?
Sure.
Please don't respond until.
I'd like to make an addition to that.
Yeah.
To Kathy's point, if you can think of things that you're going to do that are measurable.
Yes.
Right? Not just, we did program A, B, C, and D. Do they make a difference? Well, what will we be measuring to see if they made, you gotta figure out how you're going to do that.
Brian?
Might I suggest also, looking at this starting as an advisory? Okay, that doesn't, doesn't act upon town resources and grow into, and potentially grow into a committee.
Yeah, it, it depends on what you're trying to achieve. That's why I think it starts with what work do you want to do, what objectives? Then you can structure the committee, whether it be, uh, a committee that reports to the select board or an advisory committee to a member of staff. You can make that decision once you know what the work is and what you're going to measure.
Yeah.
Thanks, anyone else in the? Okay, anyone else in the room? Yes.
Like that, does that include freedom of?
Name and address, please.
Oh, Mike Shaw, Baltimore Street.
It's, it's for the record.
Does that include freedom of speech? And the human rights?
You, you addressed your question to me?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
And then, I, I, I know this seems like a silly formality.
Yeah.
But otherwise, we end up in a brawl.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I've only got this to try and calm things.
More than I had.
Do you have a response to the question about freedom of speech? The question is, would, would the freedoms and, and human rights that you're trying to defend include freedom of speech? Is that a fair summation?
Yes.
I, I actually, um, I mean, I haven't written a proposal, so I, I don't, of course, freedom of speech isn't.
Thank you.
Only wondering, because she was trying to squash ours.
Okay. You got away with that. Okay?
And lost, she lost.
I don't even know what, where it's supposedly.
Not, so.
Agenda with this, with her, um, human rights committee. And it's her agenda only, she's concerned about.
Thank you, that's, that's an interesting comment, and I think that's what we have been addressing in trying to set up the parameters for the committee and what the committee expects to achieve. And before the committee is formed, that will be very clear, and it will be discussed in an open meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for your guidance, appreciate it.
Good.
Truly.
Thank you, thank you.
Everybody.
An hour and a half.
Thank you.
Happy trails, Morgan.
Yeah, literally.
Do you like that?
Okay. We are, we are a little over a half an hour behind schedule, and we are taking on the question of permission to build operations, tr- an operations trailer, and I think also a vehicle shed on the, um, compost, the new compost site. Okay. Greg? You want me to?
Sure, so, obviously, we have folks from, from Black Earth. We have an existing, um, contract with Black Earth. They are close to, uh, making an operational of the new facility at the, at the, at the old landfill site. I think getting electricity turned on, uh, uh, some last, uh, connections and equipment operational, and they'll be up and running. So, the, uh, current contract is, does not envision these two additional shelters. Uh, so we need to, uh, reopen the, the contract and add this, if, if that's your, uh, if you're willing to do that, certainly Black Earth would, is, is requesting that. They did, um, go through the planning board for, for site time review. They have, the planning board has approved these two buildings. So from a permitting perspective, they're in good shape. So it is, the final step is then for you to, to discuss whether or not you want to add this and what changes to the contract would, uh, be reflected, uh, to allow that to happen. So we did negotiate a, a price. Basically, we, we are receiving a, a reduction in the cost of our curbside, uh, composting collection by allowing, Black Earth to use our, our land for this new facility. This is a, a more intensive use of the land, and I think it, it has some monetary value to, to Black Earth. And therefore, I think it, it does warrant talking about changes to the contract from a monetary perspective as well. Uh, Black Earth has proposed, um, a potential change that you'll see in the, in the memo that, that Andrew wrote to, to you, that's in your packet. I think, this evening, I think it would be helpful if, um, from my perspective, I would love to see us, um, at least if it's agreeable to you on content to allow the additional buildings. And then if that's the case, then perhaps one or two of you would join me, Andrew, and perhaps Chuck, whoever else from Black Earth, to do sort of the final round of negotiation, and then be back to this full board of proposal. Rather, sort of negotiate in, in open session here, but, uh, that's, that's just my recommendation as how to best proceed.
Becky? Are we, I, I is what Black Earth wants to do up there with the buildings, and I can understand that? Is it? Is it costing the town anymore?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? I have a silly question. In your description, you say you collect textiles for free.
Yes, I believe that's part of the contract, is it not?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Recently, that you had to get a sticker of some sort. Not anymore?
That may have made some mistake on our end that someone told you that.
So, white bag textiles. On the, on the grid.
And.
I don't.
I own white bags.
Yeah.
Put them on top. Is, can we use a paper bag instead of a plastic bag, or is that something you all have to? This is, this is a sidebar, if I've ever heard one. But you did open the textile drawer.
Yeah.
I don't own those bags, so.
Yeah.
I think plastic bags are preferred, uh, just sometimes they put them in the back of the truck, and you want to isolate them from.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all, I don't, I'm going to stop.
So, John, yes?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, and I'm reading the note that, uh, that you sent to us. With regard to the permit capacity, so explain that to me. This is increasing every year, in fact, I don't know when it started. Who controls, why is that there, and who controls that percentage? And what's going on? Right now, you're at thirty tons per week, which is thirty-three percent of what the maximum permit level is?
Correct.
What goes on there? How does that, how does that work?
Right, so, uh, first of all, this is just for the Pine Street facility, and we haven't started operating yet, so we haven't, not doing anything yet. The permit is the DEP's permit to operate the facility in compost boost straps. The, um, the increase is, that there's no, like, set timeframe, it's Black Earth requests to the town. The town provides permission. I believe it's DPW who would provide that, but I don't know if that's really set out.
All right, so the clock hasn't started yet for this?
There is no clock anyways, um, but correct.
Well, it's a thirty-three percent is thirty tons, in other words, you're rated to be able to handle ninety tons.
In the, yeah, the, the full facility is.
Right, and.
And, and the DEP, I'm sorry, John, the DEP permit? Is four ninety?
The DEP permit allows to go up to ninety.
Right.
In fifteen-ton increments with your permission.
Okay, but the rate of increase, the rate at which that goes, is up to you or up to us? It's not up to the DEP?
Um, that actually is in the permit, it's like in fifteen-ton increments, and.
Yeah, but fifteen tons every week more, or, or they give you a specific time?
Um, no, so it'd be like the whole facility can then be allowed to take, like, forty-five tons, like, going.
I, I understand that, but.
We're asking a period of.
The period of time, in other words, why don't you go to a hundred in the next three weeks?
Oh, um, the fifteen, so we're only allowed to ask every six months.
That's the question, ah, that's the answer.
Yeah, we just put that in the permit because it seemed reasonable, like, you know, fifteen ton, so it's like three or four increments, and every six months.
And so, I, I mean, you, you work with a lot of towns, and thirty tons, I don't know, maybe that's where you're at right now, and if you get a permit, it can go to, what's the next level? Forty-five tons, you approach a couple of other towns, because you can, you've got more capacity, is this how it works?
Not exactly, like, we're already collecting that, so we, so we send some stuff out on a trailer.
Oh, the other, other.
We wouldn't, like, be not sending that out for the moment, and we'd be composting on site.
Did you underestimate your capacity to be able to handle that? I assume you would want to handle that in-house, but you've got this six-month time period.
No, so, we start at thirty tons, because that's what the town wanted. And.
Okay.
So, we always wanted more, and like, originally in the negotiations, we had talked about a royalty payment for each additional ton. But the town didn't like that, they want just like nice and easy, um, like, flat rate going the whole time. They, they didn't want like the royalty.
That's not my repulsion.
Well, I think part of the concern was just traffic.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah.
We wanted to, to take this slowly.
I understand what, what.
What sort of traffic.
Manageable, right, so it wasn't just simply.
There's also the financial issue of knowing what we can expect to be charged each, for each segment, rather than, than, oh, we had a good month, so we're, we're, track, track, okay, collection fees are going down, and, and, anyway. Here we are, this.
Uh, I got them, I got a handle on the man.
Okay. Other questions? Kathy?
I just, what percentage of the town takes advantage of this right now, do we know?
Yep, so.
Go ahead.
Our last count was about forty-five, fifty percent of households in town.
That's increased as, I mean.
Yeah.
From, from, yeah.
We were around a third.
Yeah.
When we started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think sustainability has those, because they asked us, right, every year. And then we, we, we do accounts for them.
I think they've also been working on, um, ed- education informations. I'd have, be happy to volunteer to help out with this. Given that I'm probably less busy than some.
I, I'd, I'd raise my hand, I thought I'm less busy, I can figure it out.
So. I gather, I should wait, Brian will be back, I'm sure. Is the, is it the opinion of the board that we should go forward with, um, a negotiation to allow the new buildings? I'm just looking for a consensus.
I, I'm in agreement with them having the buildings, I'm not sure that I.
I think we just take them to negotiation of, uh, out of the public meeting, but you said, I think we need to.
So, I understand that John and Becky have volunteered to negotiate with you nice people. And, um, is, is there anything else that you need from us now?
Um, no, I, but I was trying to just update you in general on, like, the move-out plan and fashion construction.
That'd be good.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what Chuck says, what Greg said is accurate. We're waiting on National Grid to put this up for electricity. That could be a month, two months, mostly, I'm clear.
It's, it's been a real struggle.
Yeah, they're special. It's, yeah.
When are they coming to us for a request for a road opening next?
Next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Until they take care of these folks.
One, one conversation at a time. We have Fran, Kat, Becky, and Sean will join Greg in negotiating. We, uh, we agreed by consensus.
Yes.
That, that we think this whole, this, this is.
Unless you want, would you?
Okay, so. And now we're hearing, now we're hearing their tale of woe about getting this thing open.
Yeah, I mean, it's been painful, but it's not, it's, it was like just the process. Yeah, I mean, it's been painful, but it's not, it's, it was like just the process. But, you know, we've been on them for every week the last six months and like I started talking with them early in August, you know, April twenty twenty-two. So, long time.
To try to get.
A pole moved.
Yeah, to get a pole moved. Yeah, they just moved it.
We were calling our contacts. But slow going.
Just so you know, where they're at now is they need to deliver the transformer. So that's where they're at. They need to get us to transform. So when that gets done, you know, only a few weeks to like run the systems and make sure everything's operational, just a few, uh, things being powerful. And then the plan is to be like, have a lot of like the operations in the upper area of School Street moved out in July. And then we'd like to be moved out of everything, um, all piles out by end of September. And that timeframe allows us to finish the last compost that comes in, in like, whenever the facility opens, April, May, June, like. We'll finish everything by September and get out by end of September. And that's something I'm distressed with Chuck.
So, um, if National Grid is coming before us at our next meeting, can we ask for an update on their plans here?
Yeah, that should be in advance. They know that's coming down.
Exactly. Don't, don't, we're not gonna surprise them. Let them know. We expect an update and a commitment to get the pole done or whatever, transformer, whatever.
Transformer.
Yeah, if it's faith who's coming before you, she, she's been very helpful.
Unfortunately, no, it's not her.
Is there anything further that?
Uh, you need from us? Is there any further that we need from them?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. So Greg, will you be setting up with Black Earth then?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
One day's a time they can do that.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll be bringing my textile.
Take them over to my bag.
Take them up next, next to you, Captain Brian.
The next thing. Is permission for banners at Sweeney Park for the softball field?
Correct. My name's Paul Staridi. I live in twenty-fourth St. Rowan, Manchester. I am also the president of Manchester Essex Softball Association, five-one-three-C. We just formed last year to kind of really help out down at Sweeney, get the softball field ready. We now have varsity girls back. Um, these were all with Hamilton, one of them last year was the first year they were back here. So that field needed a lot of work. Uh, we're very closely with Park and Rex and DPW. We raised about thirty thousand dollars last year and really got a lot of new things down there. We've got a scoreboard, everything else. What we're looking to do is the same thing that we've done with Little League, the banners. Um, they, we would like to put them up like April first, have them down by July first. Put them up in a tasteful manner. Actually, I'll work with Park and Rex if it's granted. Um, because there's a little different challenge. We don't have an outfield fence. We do have an outfield fence, but it's a temporary one. Because they use that as a sock field as well, so we put it in, take it out at the end of the season. Um, so we're gonna have to figure out exactly how we're gonna do it on the fence. Uh, but we also have a backstop. We can use some of that area as well. So I have some photos if you need anything or any questions.
I think you're probably aware, there's a complication in that there is a citizen petition article that will appear on the town warrant. To, um, allow, um, signs on, um, property owned by the town. And, um, property controlled, owned by the town and controlled by the schools. This is an effort to allow a similar effort, a similar use of signs and, and advertising at Highland Field. And this is my personal feeling, if that is turned down at town meeting. I'm going to have a hard time saying that this is different. If, if the voters say that the town and the schools should not be allowed to permit these signs, I think. So my suggestion is that we agree conditional to the vote of the town meeting.
So just, we're not school-related, we're K through eight?
Yes, I, I understand.
Yeah.
But that is a town-owned facility, so the town can give you permission unless the voters say that the town shouldn't.
But to be honest, I'm, I'm familiar with both sides of this, with the school as well.
Yeah.
Um, because I was on a sports committee there as well.
Okay.
What they're looking to do, and it's a little broader, they want to be able to put advertisement inside the school. And on school property, things like that, to raise money for the school system sports program. This is like it is for Little League, like it is for, it's K through eight, not school-related. This is like town.
This is. The, yeah.
Is this, but I, I kind of was viewing this a little differently because it's not on the school ground. Does that not differentiate the current town by law?
It can be argued would disallow this use. And.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's the bylaw says no. Um, if we, if the, um, citizen petition is accepted. Then the town has the ability to give permission for people to put this sort of signage on town property.
But I think I might suggest that you could give a, your approval now for this season, but if the vote is not approved. Then you're gonna have to have a different conversation for next, for next year.
Signed, yeah, so signage will go up April first and we'd have it down July first regardless of any decision. It's the season and then we take it down.
Right.
Um, that's what we, that's what Little League does.
Just because of the timing.
Yeah, we can't, we can't give you permission and say on, on, April twenty-fifth is voted down.
That's what I.
You're in a difficult position. You can't, you can't sell advertising for three weeks. So I, I, I concur that, that's probably. You know, nothing's happened yet, so. That makes.
Being a much bigger problem. I mean, obviously, potentially exists, but. I, I, I can't see where the town, the voters would have a problem with that.
Is Paul, is, is Paul aware of this? They have town.
Yeah, so Paul has, uh, basically considered this temporary.
I understand his interpretation, yes. And he's aware that, uh, we're considering this as well.
Yeah.
Not you.
Yeah, different, different Paul.
Oh, excuse me, yes.
Okay, do I have a motion then?
Yes. I'm moving that the board approve the request from the Manchester Essex Softball Association to hang temporary banners at Sweeney Park Softball Field.
Second.
Friendly amendment?
Specifically from.
From April first through July first, twenty twenty-four. Agreed.
Agreed.
Any further discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Becky, yes. Kathy, yes. Anne says yes?
John says yes.
Great. You are approved.
Going forward, should I do this every single year?
Going forward will kind of depend on what the town does and, and if you'd like to lobby the town to permit.
I, 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 I think, Anne, if I may, I think you're gonna have to come back next year because we're approving this.
Yeah.
For the two thousand.
Right, and which is fine. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, then next year it's.
You probably have to come back every year, which is. Okay.
Even if your kids aren't playing.
Yeah, but I can't let this.
No.
We gotta keep improving this field.
Yeah.
It looks great down there with the scoreboard and speaker system. It's great. It's been really nice, so. And Park and Rex, DPW, Freddie's been so helpful. It's been great.
Super.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Sorry.
Is Diane online?
Yeah, she has a conflict tonight with, with the board. No, so she, she does send her regrets.
She's still chair? Is that where it there? Is she still chair?
I believe so. So I think it might be helpful just sort of from the, uh, the materials in your package, just sort of take it from the top and just go section by section.
Yep.
Yeah, so that is available to everyone. So section one talks about the, the resident stickers. Distributors where they're needing to be placed. If they're lost, you need to pay ten dollars for replacement. Uh, new residents would need to bring in their car registration, obviously, because they won't have received, see one as part of their excise tax.
People move. Police and therefore, we do not pay them. Um, are there any comments on this?
I just wanted to be clear on renters are included, like, oh, you know, someone has a lease for a year or six months, you know, they're not a short-term renter. They are, someone rents an apartment, they are included as their residence.
Yes. That's the.
About the building owner. That's the next category.
Yeah, we're just on the first top.
Just, just, yeah, just want to do it, you know, second line section there.
I would suggest deleting the line that says resident stickers are valid, valid for a year. We may decide to shift the, um, time period at some point and, and we're tightening ourselves up unnecessarily, I think.
Or we can modify it.
That was for the time indicated on the sticker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, well, John.
Right about this.
Yeah.
With that. Um, so you got change, that resident stickers are valid for whatever indicated on the sticker. You okay with that? Um, so do we? So.
Do you want a motion on each one, Greg, or do you wanna?
Let's, let's hear, right?
I'm sorry.
You want a motion on each one or do you want to go through the whole discussion first and then?
Let's do a motion on each one. It doesn't take very long and it makes it very clear.
So I, I, I move to approve the resident sticker policy as indicated with the change. To, um, remove the line. Change, uh, validity of one year to as printed on the, on the sticker.
Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Answers yes?
Yes.
Okay. Non-resident property owners. And I, and let's, let's do this. So the question is, you, if you were a non-resident property owner, do you get two, there are either one sticker for the person to whom you rent your property? And one sticker for yourself?
So what's, what I see here, there's a note here, this is hard to regulate and may be difficult to impose. To me, that's a red flag. We can't enforce something. It's, it makes no sense to put it in the policy, in my mind. It just creates bureaucracy and.
Okay, so your, is your suggestion that we not issue stickers to non-resident property owners?
No, my suggestion is that we allow a property owner to have a resident sticker.
Yeah.
They can now, right?
I envision, well, I know people, they're in Florida, six months and a, a day.
Right.
And their Florida plates are here in town. In the winter, they own the place, they rent it out, you know, short-term when they're not here.
Yeah, you gotta be careful with this. We get too many snowbirds, you know. You know, I myself, before I moved here full-time, I had my daughter living. There's also, it's a good reasons why, I just have a problem. Someone's paying taxes.
The excise tax, I mean, is the car, how, where the car is, uh.
No, but that.
Well, that's, that's the problem with that. Their cars are registered in Florida.
That's.
My car was registered in Andover until I moved here full-time and then, so, but I paid taxes like everybody else. I wanted my sticker.
But what's, what is the note about hard to regulate? I, I don't, I hear what Kathy's saying and then that something that's hard to regulate shouldn't happen.
So, so the, the, the hard to regulate part is the one sticker. Because of, you know, your, your snowbirds might have two, three board cars.
Uh-huh.
Um, and the renters may have two, two or three cars. So it's, it's increases the number of stickers.
Right, so the issue in my mind, I'm not sure we would be discussing this if we didn't allow ordinary residential, resident stickers to be used at the beach, okay? Because if I'm a snowbird, right? And, um, maybe I'm not a snowbird, but maybe I'm just living somewhere else and have a part-time, you know, I live here part-time or use the property part-time. I need to be able to park just to do business downtown. Forget the beach, right? But I think there's angst about giving.
You're right.
Property owners who don't live here a sticker because now you can use that regular sticker at the beach. I don't think we'd be having this conversation. Couldn't be used at the beach. But as a, as a non-resident property owner, I needed a resident sticker just to do business here. And, and that's my concern.
How many, how many is this upset? Do we have any idea how many?
That was gonna be my next question.
I, 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 how many non, you know, non-residents, property owners do we have?
So.
Something like five percent?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
That, that's what you need, uh, well.
I don't, I asked her that question. I don't think she had that.
Which is why it's hard to regulate.
Right.
Yeah.
Part of it is, um. How do you have a sticker that's valid for the duration of somebody's living in town? If you're not paying excise taxes, but you own the building.
So the same way you would, you'd show up with your evidence that, that you own the building and evidence that you own this car and you get a sticker.
A sticker a year. It's, yeah, but the calendar year. Well, it's calendar year.
But a renter, renter is renting just for the months of.
Yeah, they're long-term.
You know, uh, de- December through whatever, but they're going to get a beach sticker, even if they're not living here.
You be, you mean for the months that they aren't here. They're, they're living in there for four months or five months.
And then they move out.
And they've got the sticker. I mean, how mu- you can't, the micro manage all this.
Well, that's, that's part of the problem though. I mean, it, we can't, I, or I don't feel. Um, that it's right for some to be penalized and some not, either. And, and I don't know if there's an easy solution.
I think we, as like I said, I think we created a, there's an unintended negative side effect of allowing the resident stickers to be used at the beach. Because I will tell you, I live on a resident.
Yeah.
Only parking street, okay? And if you're telling me I wouldn't be able to get to my building during the summertime and park on the street where I live, okay? Because, you know, I don't live there full-time, that's baloney. You can't do that, right? You have to allow property owners to park in residential areas because they might need to get to their property. And we have a very long list of streets to approve.
That's what we need to go back.
That's the issue. You can't deny property owners. You know, resident stickers.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Do we? We're, we're gonna revisit the beach issue in September after Diane collects data here, right? But I just think the decision tonight is, do we allow property owners who are non-residents to get a residential sticker? And I think the answer has to be yes.
Yep.
As.
Should it be one sticker or should it be a sticker?
Or? I, I think. I I think, I don't know, that's a good question.
That's a, that's a tough one, because they're not paying excise tax, so how do we know how many?
Well.
If they're if they're coming in getting stickers for all their, whomever kid.
I will.
I think.
All you have to do is show a bill. Let me offer a couple of scenario, real life scenario, so one real life scenario is that um, more than one, there's more than one owner of the building, so maybe a husband and wife or whatever, right? So I think both of those people should be allowed to get a sticker. You could also have the situation like I did where I had multiple cars registered in my name because my kids' cars were in my name. You can't tell me which car is my car and which car is my kid's car, and they might need to borrow car number one and I need to get to my property.
That was the scenario that Diane brought up, that is actually.
Yeah, I mean, I needed to send my my kids here to go pick up something, you tell me they can't park on the street because they didn't take mommy's car, no, you can't do that.
But they're not registered here.
Right, but but the car was registered in my name, so when I went to Diane to get my stickers, they were my cars and I'm the property owner, I want my cars. I don't want to have a Manchester car that I just drive to Manchester.
No, no, I understand, and in that circumstance, you know, how many parents have cars registered to them that their kids are driving and the kid's thirty five years old? I hope not many.
Yeah, well.
But if the car is registered to whoever that name is, and if that name is also on the title of the house or whatever.
You can't say that.
This scenario exists for insurance purposes too.
Oh, that's correct, that's a little surprising.
Yeah, so.
But I'm not in the insurance.
No, what I'm saying is that there are a number of different reasons why people
Think the car's a new name.
Car in Manchester that really don't live in Manchester.
I wholeheartedly understand that, but if you are a property owner, car is your property too, and you have the right to bring your car and park it on the street where you own property, I don't know how you police that.
Well, you know, I I would be in favor of saying, you've got to deal with all of that. Diane can keep track of when people manually come in and say, well, how many stickers are involved each year on this, if it's like thirty or forty, I don't care.
And that's what we need, right?
We need.
He did, what is the current law saying, that a property owner can get a a resident sticker?
Yeah.
So if we want to just leave it the way it is?
Yeah.
Then we don't have to change and.
No, wait, this is, this is, what it says is one sticker may be issued to a non-resident.
My question is, is this a request for a change or is this the current law, this does not look like the current law to me.
One is the piece.
Yeah, this is a request to change.
You strike one and just say stickers may be issued.
Well, what is the current bylaw saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Stickers may be issued. Yeah.
We take the one open, that's the current.
Right.
So so if it's the current bylaw already, do we need to vote to change anything at all, I'm thinking we don't.
I think that's a good idea for right now, leave it as it is and then revisit the beach aspect.
Yeah.
In the file.
So we're saying that stickers.
We're saying leave it the way it is. Until such data comes back to us that we know what we're changing.
And 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 probably make it a full sticker.
You say stickers, yeah, that's right.
Um. Is there a motion to approve the non-resident property owners and stickers may be issued to a non-resident who owns a Manchester residential property, the owner must personally present the vehicle registration and proof of ownership, which could be a fact.
Like, do we need to prove anything if it's?
Let's just, I thought we don't, yeah, I I think, yeah, I think we just.
Okay, but.
That's my problem.
Is is that exactly the current word? Okay. Then the next one is commercial?
I think so.
So again, is this the current law, do we need to vote on anything if this is what currently exists?
Well, just asking, should it be continued, but yes, if it's the same as it is now, then we don't need to do anything on that one.
And is is Diane tracking this information, you know, Greg?
Yeah.
Okay, is she in the past or she's just?
I I don't know how.
Well, she's on it now, that's.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know what it says means when it says in parentheses partners or other person partnerships are not eligible for beach stickers since they're at beach.
Exactly, I that's why I'm not comfortable voting on this at all.
Okay, so why don't we strike that, you will have to come back to it. Um, what if we decide to change the way stickers work? But one sticker may be issued to a Manchester commercial property, the owner must personally present vehicle registration and proof of ownership, so one for commercial.
And that's as it is now, correct, so no change on that.
Okay.
And same with the business owner, is that is that in our bylaws now, the business owners do not receive a residential sticker? Unless they own, that's what it is now, so we don't need to do anything with that either, correct?
Oh. Is the current, in the in the previous commercial one, does the current law include the parenthetical about beach stickers?
Yes, that's that's a change because of the structure.
Well, I think we probably should strike that, okay, so we do change that.
Okay.
Okay.
And so.
So we do need a motion.
So I move to continue the practice of issuing one sticker, one park, one resident, is it a residential parking sticker? For uh, Manchester commercial property owners. The owner must personally present the vehicle registration and proof of ownership.
And it's one sticker per property?
Per property, one sticker per.
Friendly amendment, second.
Brian says yes?
Yes.
Becky says yes?
Yes.
Kathy says yes, Anne said yes.
Anne says yes.
Okay. Uh, and then we, business owners, we haven't changed, so we can just skip it. And we go on to parking factors, where it gets complicated. I have a problem with the line that says doing so will end the placard program. I, one person, oh.
I'm sorry.
Placards are not to be copied or reproduced in any way, doing so will end the placard program. That seems a little draconian, yes.
I I, yeah, it should say.
For for that, for that individual.
Right, right, and if anybody who does so will be removed from the placard program. I think if you copy it, you're out. I I actually think there should be a fine associated with with placard duplicating.
It would be duplicating the town seal, we know that's a problem.
That's a, that's a very good point.
Sure.
Yeah.
What might an appropriate fine be, because do ending the, ending their participation in the placard program does nothing, they might repeat the same behavior next year, and what are you gonna do if they? There's gotta be some kind of a fine.
I was gonna say five hundred.
That's exactly what popped into my mind.
That's a great idea. Great.
Chief, where are we?
Can we do that, yeah?
No, I I've had to, I have to check, I don't know.
Maybe a limit of what?
Maybe limited to three hundred.
Okay.
You know, chief.
It might be, it might be three hundred, now that you mentioned it, it's 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 in the it's would be under the, it's still substantial, though.
Yes.
Section twenty five D tickets.
Can we do that per day? Let's just copy this.
Well, but did they use it? Per, per use, right? Yeah.
Once you discover it's been.
They get a multiple copies, use it again, get another ticket.
Hundred bucks.
Well, or more.
All were mad.
What? This is second, placard will be sealed by the parking works office.
She has her notaries, an official emboss, right?
Right, so be a physical.
There's got to be a better way of saying that.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree.
Just like plasticized?
No. Embosses, the like the.
Oh, it's like a notar.
Gold seal and emboss it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like to press it.
So maybe if you make those revisions and come back to us, so add a fine.
Add a fine, you're out forever.
We'll seize your house.
And and instead of saying, um, I I think it would be good to say that because the placard will have the town seal, it is a town document. And sub, and and that, I think that.
Yeah, I think it's a good explanation.
I put that in as a parenthetical statement, I think that's a good idea, it's is a very specific, gives it more of more of a legal.
That's right, Manchester matters won't be.
However.
Like the fine should be included, that should be included on the actual placard, so they know that if they duplicate.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I I, yes.
They will get a.
But I I think that that what we need to distinguish is that the fine for duplicate, this is a, if someone duplicates it, that's what the fine is. It's not the fine for misappropriating the town seal, that's that's a a different thing, I mean, that could be tacked on, but it's.
But but the 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 placard should say, what happens if you copy it?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Yep, legally speaking.
Um.
I believe the maximum's three hundred, it just looks.
Okay, now we get into the actual details. Um, a resident temporary sticker is free, one sticker card is in the shop. And I think we would take out the and allows for all resident parking, including beaches.
Okay. Okay, like, I mean, I literally just got one a few months ago, my car was in the shop. Okay. I needed to get every ring, including the beach.
Oh, it's just that all stickers allow for parking on residential, okay, fine.
But this is a good temporary placard, and do all temporary placards allow for the beach?
No, this is the resident temporary.
That's right.
So this one, this one is, I understand.
Is it, when it says temporary, anything that's temporary must have a date on it.
It's that she gave me a two week window, because that's.
Negotiated, okay.
Yeah, because I told her when my car would be out of the shop and then had to go back and get it extended when it was the owner, yeah.
Okay.
It's justice.
That's.
Someone hit me.
Oh, jeez.
The next one.
I would not be happy about, I would hardly upset.
Okay. Rental tell oh, this one, okay. Fifty dollars a week for short term rentals with proof of rental and includes singing beach parking.
And I don't think it should include parking.
About this and suggested that it include singing beach parking on weekdays.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Weekday singing beach.
Weekdays.
We.
We put in there money.
Uh, yeah, yeah, make it.
And what about?
And that would be.
Increasing the cost or?
Yeah.
I I I think it should be an increased cost.
Do you want to add a complexity to that, I'm just thinking holidays.
Yeah.
That becomes an aggravate, it's really only July fourth, but that's on a Wednesday, you know.
It'll be Memorial Day.
That's true, and both of those are big.
Memorial depends on the weather, but July fourth.
So Monday through Friday excluding holidays.
Excluding holidays. All of this.
Yeah. Um. And it would be good to have that stated on the placard.
Right.
This is Monday through Friday, correct? What would that increase the?
I think there was a recommendation for seventy five dollars.
Yeah.
Monday through Friday excluding holidays, seventy five dollars. Got it. Okay, caregiver placards.
Did you want to do a motion for the?
Yes.
Temporary.
Temporary. I move that the select board approve the policies for the temporary, resident temporary and rental temporary placards as modified.
Second.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
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 Yes, justice.
Debbie, was that clear, did you?
It's mine.
She's so good.
Okay, caregiver placards. I would like to change the senior to something else.
I was thinking, yeah, absolutely, um, there are people other than seniors who need care. Is there some wording that we can, you know, like disabled residents who may not be seniors?
Care, just call them caregiver stickers.
Right. And then, and.
Well, what distinguishes them from a nanny, I guess?
I think maybe they're two different things.
Well, but what I'm, the reason I'm questioning it is because if we're gonna have caregivers get free placards but charge nannies, then we need to be able to distinguish them and so.
Can you call it, the caregiver placards, the senior, so that's number two.
Could you call it assisted residence, is that? Does that?
We may need some.
As as a heading?
Oh, legal help.
You know, I think we may need some.
Okay, but suppose that senior residence was was number two and nannies was number three and we increase the numbers thereafter.
Okay.
So that they're separate, clearly separate things.
All right, like a disabled, add a disabled category or something, or.
You used to say kids.
I see what you're saying, caregiver is one placard, nanny is a totally separate one, but how do you? I agree.
If I'm a nanny, I'm just gonna say, hey, I'm a caregiver, you know, how do you, how do you prove? Right now, there's proof based on age, right, so senior, but if we want to be able to allow other people who need caregivers, but asking them to provide some proof, I I think we could get into some legal
Yeah.
issues, and I'm just wondering if our license law, yeah, licensed, well, but it could be a family member, so I I think our.
Well, it can also be some, a young child who's disabled and the family has a a live-in caregiver, and that's very, you know, I think a difference, so I think you're right, Kathy, I think we need to figure out how to have.
The issue is if we're gonna charge for nannies and not for the other caregivers, we have to have an objective way of distinguishing them, and I'm not legally enough to tell you what that is.
I don't know.
Oh.
I would think there would be, but I doubt not.
Yeah. So you're subtle, you've been a, number one, it could be disabled residents.
But then, you know, we need to have some type of proof, so that's why I think we still need to get legal involved here.
Yes, yeah.
What would we be allowed to ask for in terms of?
Is, how does this, is permits issued for this now or placards?
The senior residents.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
For for seniors, for for senior caregiver givers? I'm just wondering how many of those folks are going to the beach?
It's the caregiver who gets the placard, right? So the caregiver can go to the beach.
Well, or the caregiver.
Well, I mean, yes, if you give the placard, the caregiver can do whatever he want, or she wants, but.
Monday through Friday, but I I, it's still.
I mean, ostensibly, that was for the caregiver to a a little day out or a hour or two on the beach with whoever I'm taking care of.
Yeah.
Well, so that's not how I, I I think there is, again, we've when we started using one sticker for everything, we added a complication. A caregiver needs to be able to park in res- in resident only parking, okay? For, forget the beach, right? So you have to allow that. But now it can be used on the beach, so now you add complications onto what. So now you add complications onto what we might want to do here.
Let's go back to the good old days.
See, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, the point you make, are you a nanny or are you a caregiver? What do you want me to be?
Right, exactly. I'm going to be the caregiver if it's free.
So I'm, I'm thinking we just charge, I don't care what the story is, we're charging you this. That's why I asked the question, how many caregivers are taking seniors to the beach?
That's why I asked how many nannies.
But I'm, I'm concerned about that.
And, you know, you're paying for that because I expect that ninety five percent of you aren't going.
I, I don't know. I think so, you've got, you've got, if you have a senior who has, or somebody with disabilities who has a caregiver, I think many of those are on fixed incomes and what the caregiver makes is not a great amount. And I think that, I think we have to be, I, I think this needs to be given more thought all around.
I think we need Diane here and she can tell us, like, how many of these placards do we issue? And I give it, we need some data.
And I've seen seniors at the beach, frankly, they sit on the benches up above the, they're not going out.
They don't want to get run over by the dogs.
Oh, whatever, but they're, they're sitting up there and on, on the, on the bench.
That's going to cut it back.
Fox and Duck are getting.
Okay.
We're going to hunt on this for.
And get legal or, or at least more information. And, and the questions are how to distinguish between a nanny and a caregiver.
And if we need to.
If we need to.
Yeah, yeah. There's a small enough that we're not sacrificing anybody.
Well, and could you give?
I'm not sure how many nannies we have.
Well, also with the nannies, could you give them a temporary, like a renter placard with serves the same function?
This is the number.
That's all the.
Nanny.
Six, yeah.
Six nanny plaques.
That's right.
Where'd that come from?
From last, uh, two weeks ago. It was, it was one of the, one of the, I knew we had that number.
Okay, well done.
The nannies, they're going to probably take them.
Now, interestingly, they also had caregiver placard. There were sixteen of those, twice as many, but of course, that was zero cost. So I don't know how many of those nannies were quote caregivers, but.
Well, the, the, so I, I think that, that along with the employment that's asked for with nannies, and I, I think a nanny should just get just, just the same as a temporary renter placard. They get a temporary nanny placard and.
I still think we need some information from Diane because it's not clear to me if, you know, you're over a certain, how does she know, how does she determine that she can issue a senior resident caregiver placard? Does the senior resident have to give a license with their birthday on it? And, and what, I, I just don't understand the process here for issuing. Can any senior walk in there and say, hey, Diane, I, I have a caregiver, I need a placard? Or is there some documentation she asks for?
So if they're, if they're residents and they're turned in their census, she has their birthday in the census. I guess if she's saying sixty five and older, they qualify for, for senior caregiver.
That's why I, I agree, Reed, senior needs to be, I, I think that it's not just a senior.
Right, but what I'm getting at is.
So I get an extra sticker just because I'm old?
Mature.
She's, she's got to be, she's got to be asking some questions about, about the, the recipient of the placard, who is the caregiver, right? Otherwise, every, you know, two thirds of the population of the town can walk in there and get a extra placard and get a kid and go to the beach.
Right.
So.
Yeah, this is, that's.
They're kids and caregivers, actually.
Exactly.
Mine will raise their hands. Yeah. So I just think.
Okay, and, and incidentally, Monday through Friday excluding holidays.
Yeah, yeah. So we want more info on that. Voter.
Um, what is signing beach parking?
Not signing.
I have signing.
The.
Spell check made of doo doo.
The. My understanding is that Rock, neither Rockport nor Marblehead makes any accommodation for out of town voters.
That's what I saw as well. Why do we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to.
Doesn't bother me at all.
Yeah.
Nope.
I know Brian thinks this is important.
Why?
How, how many out of, well, it's like, what, a third?
Yeah.
How many voter placards do we issue?
It's your papers.
What's your papers, H. John?
Eighty two.
And we have how many spaces out back here?
Yeah.
Two, three?
Six.
Oh, and some at Tux Point. And some at Tux.
Out, out back here.
Well, Tux.
Just along the fence here.
Just the, just the ones on the fence.
Yeah, other than that, um.
And Tux is just kind of a free for all.
Free for, nothing posted.
Yeah, since anybody wants to show up. Although those people, if you've got a placard, could you, well, you can't park it. Can you park in a resident space with a placard?
Voter placard, no.
Voter placards.
Voter placard. I mean, if all the spaces are filled and you show up.
Oh, luck.
Your ad hoc.
So this is directed at non-resident mooring holders.
Yes.
Correct, okay. And worst case scenario is that if the non-resident mooring holders couldn't park their car, they'd have to get a ride from a friend or they'd say, I don't want my mooring anymore. I doubt it.
Certainly when we had a mooring in Marblehead, we had somebody.
Yeah.
We would find someplace legal to park.
Right.
And.
They'll find a way, or if they don't want their mooring, then the list gets shorter.
There's someone on that list waiting for that mooring.
Yeah, somebody's waiting for that mooring, it's twenty year waitlist, so I'm not too worried about.
I understand Marblehead's problem, they got no place anyway.
Right.
They, they just don't.
Do they need no place?
I mean.
Marblehead has a, you do have a public parking area.
Yeah. Served by a public launch.
It's like this. I mean, they have a very limited parking.
Yeah.
Size of downtown, it's crazy.
What kind of backlash will happen?
I think we need to get some more information on this one, too.
This year, we're not going to have boating placards.
People have already paid for the moorings.
So it's going to be.
Though it could be a change we adopt next year.
Yes.
But I, I still don't understand the value of taking up those parking spaces for non-residents when we are desperate for parking downtown, right?
Tux Point really isn't downtown.
I'm sorry, I was just talking about the ones over here.
Okay.
Those boater placard spaces at Tux Point?
No, there's nothing.
Saying nothing.
Pull in, Tux Point is just resident, technically resident parking. There's no parking regulation.
However, however.
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 People put boating placards there and expect not to get a ticket.
Well, we've been allowing the parks because it's such limited spaces out back. We have, we issue eighty two something boating placards and where else are they going to go? So.
So. So we have not been enforcing the boating placards.
Oh, yeah, we have out, out here. Out here and at Tux Point. I mean, we would have been allowing it at Tux Point. Tux Point needs to be readdressed altogether with what's going to happen.
I mean, what these people could do is they could drop somebody off here, get the boat and then drive up to Tux Point, pick me up on the way out. Because in Tux Point, anybody can, I understand, you can't, you can't do anything about Tux Point. I mean, you got the chowder house going all the time and it's, it's, uh, anybody can park there. So that's what they would do.
But they're not, it's not supposed to be go and park and you're there eight hours overnight.
Nothing that says you can't. Nothing that says you can't.
Yeah, there are, there are people here who go, who go out to Baker's Island.
Yeah.
And I don't know where they live, other than Baker's Island.
Really? If you want to accommodate it, you're better off encouraging the longer term parkers to be at Tux.
Oh, yeah.
There's more capacity there than there is here. To have someone take up a spot for a week here.
No, that's.
That's, that's a little abusive, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, should we be accommodating a voter for a week? I mean.
I, I honestly don't agree with accommodating. We're talking about non-resident voters, not resident voters. Because a resident can park in a residential parking space. I am not in favor of accommodating non-resident voters for a week in the middle of downtown.
I'm the same.
That's what I'm saying, Texas is a better.
Whether it's here or town.
One of my goals for the management is to get some things resolved. And, and, and I'm hoping, now, I've heard that there's no, that other towns have limited facilities or no facilities for non-resident. I've heard we can't change this now because people have already paid for their moorings and assume that they can use their resident, that their non-resident mooring holder placard.
What if they pay now for a boater placard, Todd? Do you know? It says here.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars. Yeah, that's what they were talking, talking about increasing it to seventy dollars. I mean, fifty dollars for a day.
For a week?
Yeah.
A season.
No, it's a season.
Okay, no.
Okay, you say that's ridiculous.
So what can we reasonably?
For next year.
For next year? Is there anything, question one is, is there anything we could do this year? There's nothing we can do. What, could we move the spaces?
I think you could, I think you could allow overnight parking at Tux.
Yeah, you can say no overnight parking here.
And say no overnight parking, yeah. I think that would be a, a small step in the right direction.
That wouldn't drive people nuts.
In a designated area, you say for up to seven nights. And this is a temporary boater placard, right? This is not a season.
No, no, no.
This is season.
This is a season boater placard. I, I think that seventy five dollars, even seventy five dollars if we went up with that.
So if we just talk about this year, if we add a time, time limit to these spaces of what, how many hours?
May I suggest the, similar to the time limit parking downtown, eight, eight to six?
Eight to six, okay, good. How about eight to six for the boater placard spaces behind Town Hall for this year? And then, what did you want to do at Tux?
Overnight.
Do we need to, oh, no, why do we need to allow overnight parking for non-residents?
Let's do it.
Non-residents, okay.
Because they bought their mooring, they've already paid for the mooring and they've been able to do that.
But to be gone for seven.
That's the expectation. We, we, you know, we, we have to give them time to.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
So, so at Tux, the boater placard, the non-resident boater placard allows you to park for seven nights.
That was a suggestion.
I was like, why do we?
Right, right now, it's kind of undefined.
It's undefined.
But the suggestion is a week. Well, Anne, you live in that world a little bit. How many of your colleagues are going off on a two and three week?
No, it's for non-residents.
I said colleagues, I'm not disquishing.
Many of my colleagues are non-resident.
Okay.
And none of them park there.
No.
No, no, that's correct.
More than.
A day.
A day.
But you have, you have friends that will go off on a two week trip sometimes?
That they won't park at Tux.
Okay, all right, so those people exist here?
Yes, but they don't park at Tux, they don't park down at the Tux Point parking area.
No, I'm, I'm not quite, I'm, I'm just saying there are people that own boats that do that.
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay. Anne just happens to know, all of them happen to be in, in town, but there are others probably that.
No, I, I know people from both places and, and as it turns out, most of them use the duck park. Exactly. Passing on that.
Yeah.
I, I think it.
That's true.
Let's increase the price to a hundred dollars.
So they're talking this year because we want to have a share next year.
This year, a hundred dollars. Eight, eight to six by the ramp. And three nights at Tux.
And how do we monitor that then?
So she's got to have an expiration date on, if she, if someone's going away.
No, it's seasonal.
If it's seasonal, that's where, how do we know?
That's a good point.
And we can't, if we cannot enforce that, that's, that's my point with, with that, the overnight. I mean, we won't know if they're, they're one night, one week or one month.
Sure you, I won't know.
So my only other thought would be to, uh, post a certain section of Tux Point boater placard, like in the back along the streets. When people aren't, well, when people are parked outside of that at night, patrols can see who is supposed to be there and who's not. Just as a question.
So how many butter, neither? So, so put a, put a chalk mark on the tire.
Yeah.
Right.
They can't chalk it, it's illegal.
I got a can of spray, just kidding, I don't, just kidding.
A post-it note under the.
A post-it note on the windshield. Posted. Okay, that would allow you to notice if somebody had been there.
Yeah, notice hasn't been removed.
Yeah.
Okay, so this year, a hundred dollars for a boater placard from eight to six by the ramp or in three nights at Tux, what we said. And then next year, do we want to get rid of this?
Next year's next year.
Let's revisit this.
Well, let's.
But it'll have to be taking up a lot of the programs, uh, again, in October.
Right.
Because before anyone will decide, will have made a decision.
So we'll make a decision about boater placards next year at our October test session. Got it.
Right, would you like a motion to approve the boater placard price increase to one hundred dollars with the placard at town, applied to Town Hall for eight in the morning to six P. M. And at Tux Point for up to three nights?
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yep.
John says yes.
Okay, we've got to moving things.
Business. Placard.
Well, no, I'm not getting money.
No, we got a couple.
We've got a whole bunch.
We're almost done hanging there. For business placard.
Probably it's like two more pages.
So what is the current situation with the business placards?
As it, as it states here. This, this. As it reads now is how it operates today.
Okay, so there's nothing to change here if we like what number four says.
And it states on it that it is a business placard, correct?
Yeah.
So you see one of those down, all right, good.
Does that want to carry the same warning about copying?
Yes, I think all placards.
All of them should have it, yeah.
All plaques. Um, if we're not changing anything. You don't need a motion?
No.
About same kind of visitor.
So visitors is different. In my mind. I have a question for Greg. I brought my visitor. Placards here, and they are. Okay. They, they have, you know, the numbers they're assigned to me has my address on it. It used to say. That it could only be used on the designated street, so for example, this says Pine Street. And it used to say, I don't remember the exact verbiage, but it used to say you can only use it on Pine Street. Doesn't say that anymore. I could take this.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. Something changed, and I don't know when it changed.
So I think what happened was there was a resident of Summer Street where there's no parking.
Right.
Requested their visitor placards for people to park on Allen Avenue.
Right, there was a, and there was something on Union Street too. There were a couple of very specific situations that Diane was trying to solve, okay? But when that change happened, it opened up a hornet's nest, okay, because I can take this, I can give this to my, usually I give it to my son, I say park on Pine Street right outside. He can take this and go down to Masscanomo and walk to the beach, and. The, also what's different here is what we changed, uh, at town meeting, we allow any household. With, on a resident-only parking street to get these things. You add all those residents and the fact that they can take these things and park wherever, without limitation, except the beach. That is not a recipe for success. So, I agree, I, I appreciate that Diane was trying to solve a particular problem for residents who live on one street. But the guest parking needs to be on a different street. But I, I don't think this wording is helpful, and I think it's potentially dangerous. And the other thing is I don't agree with the statement here that says households without off-street parking. Are entitled to two visitor placards, no, if you live in a densely populated area, you still might need these guest passes. Because your driveway may be tiny, if you want to have the kids over for dinner, you know, they need a place to park.
Should that be? Placards you have all the time, or?
It's only does, these have always, um, been. Enforced during the resident parking season, which is May one to October one.
I just wonder, that's a whole different.
Well, something changed, okay, this is a whole different approach, and.
So when I go to Arlington, to baby set, I, I. I go online to Arlington Town Hall, City Hall, and register my car, and he's allowed. I can do that, I forget how many times a year.
I like that too.
Well.
Investigate something like that.
There, so that'll work for Arlington because they don't have a beach, right? The frequency at which our, our family visits us is probably pretty high during the summer, they don't come to see me during the winter.
That, does the sticker, does the thing from Arlington restrict you to any particular area?
Yeah, I have to be on this street.
Right.
Well, this, this thing just says Pine Street, or did.
So it used to say, and I don't remember the exact wording, only to be used on the designated street, something that indicated. I could only use it on the street where I lived. It did have my address, so that way the officers would know.
No, is this a reasonable distance?
Right.
We should go back to that, and then if we have a special issue.
Right, if you could put.
I think, you know, I.
And deal with the edge cases, right, in an edge way, and not change the whole process to make.
Right, and similar to Arlington, when I was in New Jersey, in Glen Ridge, New Jersey, there was no street parking overnight, anywhere. And it's a fairly thickly settled area.
Yeah.
You could call. The police station anytime, you had to give him your car, make and plate number, and your address, and that was it. And then, which, which is similar to what you did except Arlington, except it was online, and then they know that if they see a car in and around that address. Well, they're looking for the plate number, and if they've got that, they understand that car is supposed, is expected to be on the street.
We have, and, and with the, the, I, I, we don't want to increase calls to.
No, I, I understand, which is what.
Some, sometimes people do do that, if there's like an incident where something last minute comes up, people will call them.
Oh, okay, all right, you know, it's not.
So we know what, you know, who's in front of the house.
Right.
I, I don't think, I don't know that we need a need to restrict overnight parking for residences. Because sometimes I know. We'll move our cars into the street and have it sit there overnight if we know we've got a contractor coming in and he's got to do work. And we don't have much in the way, so.
Years ago, there wasn't any overnight parking in the winter.
In the winter, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
No, no, it's, it changed.
Before you went to Blue Light.
Two thousand eleven, yeah, it changed. Uh, I first moved here, I moved in March, okay, and I had, uh, behind Town Hall. Until, uh, the winter parking bans are over, and then the following year, you went to the back. Thank you.
So as far as visitor. I, I don't know that we can bring this to closure without.
Yeah, and I don't know how many, how many requests, maybe she'd get one from you, I need more than two placards.
Is, my, my concern is that Diane is at a selectance meeting and went them, and I'll bet they meet on the first and, and third Mondays.
No, this is an unusual.
She's, she's been here at other meetings.
I think they meet on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think because of the election tomorrow, to today.
So maybe we could get a revised version, given the feedback that we've given to you, Greg.
Okay, so.
Is. Diane wrestling with these issues and what? Not the voting, but I mean the other side. You know, I mean, she's in a, kind of a unique position to be able to say, no.
Compare a little bit.
Yeah, compare.
Oh, the long-term parking.
Okay, long-term parking. The people who currently use it will be unhappy if we say they can't use it. On the other hand, it's, that's convenient downtown parking, and if we tie up seven slots, that's seven people.
Right.
Employees or otherwise. Because just to have cars sitting there all winter long.
No, I agree.
Yeah, we just don't have the capacity to accommodate this. I move to eliminate long-term parking.
Second.
Do we allow any overnight parking there?
Well, they, they do park overnight, the residents, it's just long-term.
So how do we know?
It's long-term.
And that's, we would have.
That's another good question, yeah, very good question.
Thank you.
But overnight, I mean, if the police are going by.
You know, we, we can always tell who's been there and who's moving around.
If it's covered with.
Yeah.
Sap and leaves, it's not.
Oh, what, more than a week or two weeks or something?
Well, let me, let me ask a question, if I may. Do people who live in that densely populated area need that parking? I mean, the residents, it's residence parking.
I gotta believe, they've got two cars, the top button.
For overnight.
Two cars on Washington Street.
If they got a resident sticker, they can park there anyway, usually more for the people that are leaving for a long period of time. Yeah, especially in the winter.
Yeah, yeah.
When the blue light goes on, you know, you go to that spot.
So then the rationale for having a long-term designation, let me rethink this, does this help us or does it hurt us? Would we want to reduce the number of? I pull back my motion until we talk this out.
Unfortunately, it's already been made.
Well, yeah, let's talk, yeah, so, what are the? Neg, potential negative side effects of eliminating the long-term parking?
Oh, the other thing, I, I can't think of any. We probably should. Define long-term parking, and we probably should define a, um, a penalty. Because they do, they get a parking ticket every, every day.
So, so right now, it's, it's a week, over, anything over one week is considered long-term. It's the current, that's the current practice.
We would say that. We would eliminate the long-term spaces. And you, you, but you can park there for up to a week.
We just changed boater placard to three days, right? The overnight. Does that?
What, are you saying three days? For all the people that don't go anywhere?
Yeah, Sean, does, do you have on your, your sheet the number of long-term?
People tend to do that.
There's probably five to seven cars at a time.
No, that's not a spec.
Constantly five to ten year round?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I think that's the number, I can only like seven spots.
Yeah, so they're almost always, always in use for long-term parking.
Yeah, and then, you know, it already says no, no storage of vehicles, but it's kind of what.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's registered, you've got a resident sticker, you've got a inspection sticker, and it's sure, then it's legal, yeah, it's legal.
So we have to define it. And. All they're gonna do is have somebody move, move their car for them down to another spot.
Okay. Let me make another suggestion. I think we're getting less effective. Can we skip over? Most of this and go to, and come back to it next week, next two weeks.
It'd be nice if you approved the resident.
It would be nice if you approved the resident space.
So with the motion on the table, what do we have to do?
We have to.
We have to vote.
Let's vote it down.
Vote it down.
Vote it down.
Um, we have a motion to eliminate the seven long-term spots on, at the Norwood parking lot. And it has been recommended that we. Admit that. Um, so we, we consider it at, uh, our next meeting, the eighteen. John.
No.
Anne says no.
No. Yeah. No.
Okay. Are there questions on, specific questions on the list of streets and that are resident-only? And by the way. Thank you very much, this is a very well-put together.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's.
That was, that was.
You've got comments where there are need to be comments and there are no blanks, it's great.
Yes. I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I just took a look at, like, Pine Street. As an example, kind of school where I have the questions. So Pine Street, it says that it's resident-only on both sides, except from number two to Bryce.
Right, no parking.
Right, but if you drive down Pine from the new Pine Street Fields. There's no resident-only parking sign until you hit the powder, there's nothing that says it's resident-only.
So we would need to add signage in?
Yeah, you, well, you could either add signage or not have it be resident-only if it doesn't need to be. Because if you will make that, it can't be being enforced now because there's no signs. And once you make that part of the street resident-only, then all these people can get visitor passes. So, um, I was just wondering, what's the rationale? For designating certain streets as residential only, because those are pretty, that's pretty far away from downtown.
It's not very done stuff, neither.
Right.
Well, except.
I'm just trying to understand, yeah, what the rationale.
Go when they adopted. Not even in this business, but, uh, um, it was to curb beach parking.
That's what I would have anticipated, that's a long walk to the beach.
Well, I remember as a kid, my street, Bad Street was full of beach parking.
But I'm talking about Upper Pine.
I know.
Yeah, so. I, I guess what I'm feeling is, I, I don't know how big of a problem that part. Is, because there's no sign saying people can't park there, it can't be being enforced, why do we need to add? That to the list if it's not been enforced, it's not been advertised as resident-only? I'm just concerned, especially since we're going to be giving a whole bunch of people res, you know, visitor parking stickers, uh, placards. That was question one, and then the other question I had was on school. School Street. When driving south from Essex. First resident-only sign I saw was in front of Sacred Heart Church.
Then went up further by. Should be one by Claremont Place, I think, and then here, by Windermere Park. I remember signs up there before, but maybe.
That's on the.
On the other side of.
Yeah, okay. If there's, if that's resident, and I can understand why that would be resident-only parking, because it's a tiny little street. I'm just saying, we are, there's a dearth of signs there, you never know. I'm wondering if it's hidden by a tree, because some of the, the, one of those resident-only parking signs on Pine Street on the east side. You can't even see it, it's, the tree completely covers it.
Perfectly down.
Yeah, I would love to, no, um, I'm just, I, I drove there today and I didn't see, and I drive on that street all the time, I never would know that was resident-only. So I, I, my only point here is, I just, again, I feel the signs ought to state what we intend to enforce so that people aren't confused.
Question? Couple, couple of others, so we, we still have to straighten out Pulaski here? West Pulaski becomes East Pulaski.
Pulaski is, I drove through there, you should take a ride through there, it is.
I haven't, that may have been a lot recently.
Very confusing.
Yeah, I've gone down there.
Yeah, and some spots are, are no parking, some spots are resident parking, I think it's all due to the, you know, the narrowness of the curb. So.
So when you say Pulaski West.
Yeah, so West would be.
Signs halfway through?
Yeah, it should, it doesn't.
Well, that's kind of, it's, it's odd, but if it's signed correctly.
Also, oh, okay, so it's not, it's not labeled correctly in here, but it's, it's labeled correctly, because it says west all the way.
It's west.
It's switched because it's a U.
I, I know that, so west becomes east.
Right.
Well, on one side, it's the west side, the other side is the west side.
Oh, it's the west side, so, so somewhere in the middle of the U, it changes parking on the other side.
Side of the street, I believe.
Okay, so it's west all the time, all right, so it, quite literally, this is it, okay.
Does that help you? It just seems like it would be so confusing.
Well, because it's hard to say, okay, on the outside of the U or the inside of the U.
Yes, okay. So another question, Brook Street, Summer Street to Norwood, north. That includes kind of this, the, the part that is going by the field. The tennis courts, and I'm up there maybe once a year where. It's crazy down on the, on the field, all of the spaces in the parking waterfall, and there are people parking up and down on Brook. And I know they are, you know, more often than not, they're not local people. And I, I assume that maybe you're aware of this.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, they have a.
So I mean, even though, even though it's posted resident-only, I mean, people from whatever the game of the moment is, they're parking there, not very long. Couple hours, and they're gone. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with this, if you don't have a.
No, I mean, I, it's just, you know, you got a function going on there.
Yeah, you do, that's, that's the only time it would happen.
Beauty of a small town, right?
Yeah.
Well, the same thing was true for like Sacred Heart Church, it says resident parking in front of it, I'm sure, I'm presuming you don't tag the Essex residents if they were attending this.
Even though they could park around behind.
It gets full.
It does get, it does get full, and especially since they're trading off winter, summer, right?
Yeah. Any other?
So, did you want to change Pine Street?
I just don't know, I. If it needs to be resident-only for a reason, you need to add a bunch of signs in front of people's houses who may not want the signs.
But then we got to, so, the problem is that.
Where, where do you start?
Yeah, where, where do you start, and what, what are the rules on that section of the road? Similar to Old Essex Road, there was zero parking rules.
There all the time.
Yeah, so is it by the laws of the state, is it assumed you can park somewhere unless? There's a sign saying you cannot?
Yeah, I mean, I would say you could, you could definitely park there, but it becomes an issue, then, then.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, there's, there's no sign at all, best I could tell, coming down Pine Street. So, and I don't see a whole bunch of people parking there.
But it's just basically the people that live there, that are parking there.
So. I can understand fine up the pleasant.
Right.
Because that's walkable.
Right, right.
But maybe not resident north of.
North of Pleasant. Pleasant slash Walker.
Yeah. Because I would think there would be people there, anybody possibly visiting the cemetery, or, I mean.
Or parking because they can't get into the.
Powder, maybe they want to walk in the powder house.
Or, or what, or the, the new playground.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, and can we agree that Pine Street will be resident both sides from Central?
Central.
To Pleasant slash Walker.
And there's a problem, we can always change it.
Because that was one of the concerns people had is that we weren't just going to be.
You got to keep these, the 1,600 feet of no parking. On number two, yeah.
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 Right.
Do I have a move to approve the resident parking streets? Oh, is there anyone online who has an opinion on this?
I see any hands.
So I'm sorry, just one more thing, on the Central Street, we, we made a decision on Pleasant. School Street, it says entire length on the west side. That goes all the way past 128, all the way up to Essex. Are we really going to enforce Manchester stickers up there?
We haven't passed, I mean.
So.
Has anybody ever parked up there?
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's no signs, we don't enforce. I, I just think the list ought to match what we actually do.
Just to 128?
What would you suggest, Chief?
I would say, I'd have to take a look at it again, but I would say, because I know there was a sign path, like in the Windermere Park area. I'd have to look at that.
But that's, that's this side.
That's.
That's south of 128.
Yeah.
So you're talking north of 128.
Yeah. There's, nobody's, I've never seen a car parked.
I mean, people aren't there.
Maybe in that little vegetable stand.
There isn't anybody if they park there.
But that route, when, that, when does it turn to 133? Because then that.
It's on 133.
That's way up.
People are in time. Probably mom bikers, yeah.
Okay, so, so School Street.
North of 128. Take it off.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's resident only from Central to the 128 interchange.
Do I have a motion to accept this list as amended?
A motion to do that?
Second.
Second.
Brian.
Second.
Yes.
Don says yes.
Okay. Um, we have done liaison updates. We have done. I would like a quick stretch before the end of the term, even if it's going to be very short. Or is it?
It can be shorter.
20 seconds.
Yeah, you can stand up, that's fine.
Let's have a stand-up meeting, yeah.
You can.
Budget moving along, closing in on finalizing numbers. Finance committee, so they're going to be ready for your final review. I think the big outstanding issue is how best to manage our upcoming capital needs and bond. So next meeting, we'll be talking about that at some point. The finance committee did approve this concept, having voters consider a new launch service. Need to do some final number crunching and a couple of issues. We'll have this before you, in more detail on the, on the next meeting on the 18th. Forty D hearing started today. It'll be going the rest of this week. The rest of the week is, is, is virtual only. We did post the link for the virtual meeting of the, of the town website this afternoon late. So people can have access to that. And it's, it's 100% cross-examination of witnesses based on pre-file testimony. And SOB has not opted to cross-examine any of the town witnesses. So it's just the town cross-examining SOB witnesses. So that will take place, as I say, the rest of this week, it should wrap up by Friday. In terms of the hearing. And then after that, there'll be some final filings, final arguments on both sides. And, and then we sit and wait. It could be, it'd be a long time, it'd be over a year easily that we wait for a decision. So that's taking its course.
Were there people there at 9:30 to?
Yes.
There was, there was a pretty big crowd.
Sixty, seventy people there, more maybe.
Yeah.
At the start.
Yeah.
And then dropped by 50% in the afternoon.
Right, most of them stayed for the morning session and then left after the lunch break.
It was hard to hear if you were in the, I was not, I was in the back, then moved forward. And it was really difficult to hear because they weren't miked, so it was.
We had mics for them, but they opted not to use them. So that's, it'll take its course. Proceed. So a couple of, a couple, half of, half a dozen, but probably more than two, two to four issues, I think, are going to be require some education and outreach prior to town meeting. We should be thinking about that. Launch is one of them, Essex Elementary School feasibility study would be another. Mason Building, a third, the Bond, probably a fourth. So I'm thinking of those four issues at the minimum are going to require some additional outreach and public discussions. And so we just should be thinking about the timing, holding some information meetings on those topics as we get closer. And, yeah, tomorrow's the primary. Those are open from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Memorial School. And still looking for candidates for the various elected positions for filing.
Food truck going to be there? Is the food truck?
Yeah, they have to do, yep.
Interested to hear how that goes.
It's on, they're, they'll be on Lincoln Street, I guess.
Yes, they'll be at Lincoln.
I think having public forums is a good way of doing public education.
Successful with the the tunda, so.
Yeah, so far.
No, no.
Yeah. And so perhaps at our next meeting, we ought to discuss scheduling public forums in late March and early April on those four issues.
Yeah.
We can do something like that for the prior town meeting, for the fall town meeting, we held like information sessions or something.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they don't all have to be standalone, they could.
Sometimes something that's standalone, you, you attract people who'll pick on that issue. And they don't drop off because they're bored. So I think four, four separate hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, you can fill the calendar and look at some dates. It'll be fine. That's all I needed.
Okay.
All in favor of a journey?
9:49 going in.